Good morning and ladies and gentlemen, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. I saw Alderman King. Alderman King. Alderman King is present. Alderman Harrison. Harrison is present. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris. Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Beal is present. Alderman Zlasky Garza. Zlasky Garza is present. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Scott is present. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Urban. Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Wagispack. Wagispack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is present. Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Cesado. Cesado is present. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is present. Alderman Vazquez. Vazquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Riley is present. Alderman Smith. Smith is present. Alderman Tony. Tony is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is present. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is present. Anyone I missed? Alderman Sawyer is present.
All right, we have 46 members present. There's a quorum. Please, ladies and gentlemen, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered this morning by Reverend Edward R. Williams III from the Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Reverend Eddie R. Williams III. I serve as the pastor of Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church on Chicago's Great West Side, the son of the South Side, when Alderman Tillman was the Alderman, but now I'm under the great Walter Burnett. And so, thank you for this opportunity. I see there's only a few claps. So, we need to pray. May we bow our heads in prayer. Guide me, O thou great Jehovah, pilgrim through this barren land. I am weak, but thou art mighty. Hold us with your powerful hand. Bread of heaven, bread of heaven, feed us till we want no more. God of love, justice, and mercy. We pause before we begin our agenda to thank you for making us a part of your agenda. We are thankful for the gift of life, health, and strength. We are thankful for giving us immeasurable blessings that have sustained us to this very day. Thank you for the historic and epic contributions of Black people and grant us this understanding that Blacks' excellence should never be denigrated but always celebrated 365 days of the year. We also pause to thank you for the privilege to serve humanity in our particular positions, from the highest office in Chicago to the lowest. We call it an honor to serve your creation. We are thankful for Mayor Lightfoot and her cabinet and every Alderman and official that grace this meeting today. Dear God, this morning we ask for godly wisdom for all persons in this room. Your word instructs us to ask for wisdom when we need it, so my prayer is that you would give every person wisdom that brings an idea, motion to the floor, laws, or ordinances. Give them wisdom, O God. That godly wisdom that considers the impact on all people, especially those you have called the least of these. We pray for a spirit of unity that sweeps across this august body, that will break the barriers of race, class, ungodly and unbiblical ideologies, and cause us to work together under the simple yet profound principle of do unto others as you would have us do unto you. Help us to speak kindly to one another and ensure that our words are seasoned with grace. I also pray for an increased sensitivity of heart for the poor, the broken, the destitute, the outcast, and the broken. Allow our hearts to break for the things that break your heart. Injustice, senseless violence, lack of healthy foods, inequality, inequity in our schools and community. Lord, help us. But cause the aching and breaking in our hearts to provoke the working of our minds and hands to bring about substantive change for the betterment of our people of this dear city. Then let justice roll down like waters and righteous and ever-flowing stream. Dear Lord, finally let us embrace the words of Martin Luther King, where he reminds us that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Dear God, let love abide in this room and then every room in the city of Chicago. It's in Jesus's name we pray.
All right, up next, ladies and gentlemen, is public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
Good morning to you, Madam Lady Lightfoot. I'm glad to be here. I'm celebrating. This group has had a big celebration for me, my 80th birthday. So, I'm elated. It's E-C-C-S-E. They gave me a wonderful birthday, but this is Black History Month, and Black people have to make history. We have to free ourselves off of this modern plantation. We're still on the plantation, and we're the only people in the United States of America that was enslaved in America and still on this plantation. So, when will we? If I had the power, I would free us. I would free us. Now, we have people in elected positions, but while we still on the plantation, it's not too late for Black people to be great. Now it's coming up the election time. Now, we have to make a change. If we continue to do the same thing, we're gonna get the same results. I constantly come down here, and we need Black people to come participate in government, civic. Show up and show out and let them know that we will overcome one day. We got to. This is Black History Month. Now, we got to make history by getting off of this modern plantation. We got to. We have no choice. So, we're in these high places, but I don't see any results. And with this law department, a few months ago, you had the law department. Most of these lawyers are literally white. This has to change. And every time I come down here, millions and millions of dollars are spent because of these rogue policemen paying. And who pays the fines and fees and taxation? The people. The people. So, it has to be power to the people. Good white folks, good Black people, Hispanic and Asians, and then we can make Chicago great. It's not too late. May God bless each one of you, and in return, this is Black History Month. Bless somebody Black. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, for your comments. Our next speaker is Teri Louie.
Hello, good morning, and thank you for letting me speak today. I think that it's great that ordinary citizens like myself can come in here and speak in front of everyone. So, thanks to the city and to Mayor Lightfoot. Thank you very much. I'm happy that the mandate has been lifted on February 28th. I think that's great. I would just ask that if it does get reenacted, just to have one modification of it, that being that if it does get reenacted, that children, unvaccinated children, can still take swimming lessons. Swimming is a very lifesaving skill, and I think that just because they're unvaccinated, I still think that children should be able to take swimming lessons. I'm sure that that was not the intention of it, but that's just something that happened because of it. Also, regarding to that mandate, children, especially Black children, are disproportionately affected. In Lincoln Park, which is predominantly white, about 89% of children are vaccinated, whereas in Inglewood, which is predominantly black, only 11% of the children are vaccinated. So, Mayor Lightfoot, back in 2020, about two years ago, had said that poverty is killing us, and she said that it was because of bad policy. I completely agree with her 100%. From the history of our country of slavery, segregation, and discrimination, it's been terrible for Black people, and I think that is at the root cause of the inequalities and racial disparities that we have. So, I just ask that if it happens again, I just ask that Mayor Lightfoot, please, just allow children, unvaccinated, if the mandate does come in, that they can still take swimming lessons. Also, it does seem that Black people always get the worst of it, and people of all colors that don't have a lot of money. Because if, for instance, if your child can't take swimming lessons, if you have money, it's pretty easy. You just kind of Google something, find out where you're outside of the city, in the suburbs, where you can take swimming lessons, and you just drive there and pay maybe a little extra money and do it. But if you don't have a lot of money, it's not that easy. It might be a little harder, and it might just be a rap, because you might not even be able to do that. And I'd just like to thank the city and Mayor Lightfoot for letting me speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Louie, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez, please press star six to unmute. Our next speaker is Anna Skrabalski.
Oh, that's the wrong one. It's the wrong one.
Our next speaker is Carl Brinson.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. I'm Carl Brinson, Chicago Westside Branch, NWSP. Chicago Westside Branch, and we vehemently oppose the victim justice ordinance. While we fully support holding those involved in criminal activities accountable, the proposed ordinance will do quite the opposite. As we have seen with the gang database, there are no clear metrics on how gang affiliations will be determined. It is also unclear on how assets, ownership, or forfeiture will be assessed. Black people currently make up 60% of the individuals on the gang database without an explanation of their gang involvement. Oftentimes, these individuals have been assigned the distinction of gang members simply based on where they reside. This is wholly unacceptable. We cannot afford for our communities to be further traumatized for the sake of accountability. Therefore, we are asking, unlikely saying, demanding that every Alderman, especially our Westside Aldermen, vote down this ordinance. We also commit to working with our Aldermen to craft legislation that will lead to true accountability without punitive measures that reek of guilt by associations. This ordinance in no part does help address the real ills that plague our communities. Once again, thank you for the opportunity. We hope, we wish that you will vote this ordinance down. Thank you. Have a blessed morning.
Thank you, Mr. Brinson, for your comments. Our next speaker is Chris Carroll.
Good morning. My name is Chris Carroll. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. There are Starbucks workers who I've met in the struggle who can't be here today because they're either working or attending union trainings so that they can beat the anti-union tactics of Starbucks Corporation. In solidarity with these and all workers, I urge all council members to vote yes on the resolution demanding the Starbucks executives and billionaires stop their union busting. We've heard the chants, "Get up, get down, Chicago is a union town." Is Chicago a union town? This council has an opportunity to show its solidarity toward the courageous young Starbucks workers who are attempting to form a union so that they can fight to win decent wages, more humane scheduling, better healthcare, and more. Starbucks CEO Kevin Johnson made $20 billion last year while the workers struggled to pay their rent. The corporation's executives would like to have a progressive image, calling the workers partners and pretending to be on their side. The reality, of course, is that Starbucks is as hostile to their workers' unionizing as any other corporation. The profits for the richest under capitalism only come at the expense of the working class. So, it's no surprise that faced with this historic nationwide union drive, with workers at now over 100 stores having declared, Starbucks executives are blatantly engaging in union busting. Most shamefully, they recently fired all seven workers of the Union Organizing Committee in a Memphis store. As a gentleman mentioned earlier, February is Black History Month. Dr. King was in Memphis in the spring of 1968, using his platform in solidarity with striking sanitation workers. Just days ago, Starbucks fired a Buffalo worker from the store that set this union drive in motion. It is the obligation of progressive and socialist elected representatives to publicly take a stand against these attacks. Thanks so much to Alderman and DSA member Byron Tito Lopez, who came out immediately and publicly in support of Starbucks workers and pledged to have a city council resolution passed. Thanks to the efforts of Socialist Alternative and DSA member and Seattle City Councilwoman Shama Sawant, the Seattle City Council recently passed a resolution similar to the one before you today. This resolution poses the question to this council, which side are you on? The side of billionaire Howard Schultz and corporate behemoth Starbucks, or the side of unionizing workers? I urge the Aldermen to vote yes on this resolution. In addition to this resolution, we need to organize a series of escalating actions to win the reinstatement of these fired workers, because if we don't, Starbucks will continue the firings and intimidation in their attempt to undermine the union drive. We urgently need national days of action as a part of a coordinated job defense campaign. This resolution today will be a big boost in the next steps in this struggle. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your comments. Our next speaker is Anastasia Giersbahn. Ms. Giersbahn, are you there? Please press star 69 to unmute. Our next speaker is Barbara Roblinsky.
Hello, good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity and privilege to address you today. My name is Barbara Roblinska, and I'm representing members of the St. Michael the Argangel Church community. The St. Michael the Argangel Church is located at 8237 South Shore Drive. Despite the pleas of the community, despite its beauty and importance, this church has now been permanently closed by the archdiocese of Chicago. Its future is unclear, but during this period, the empty building must be protected against vandalism and demolition by neglect. An important step towards a good outcome would be the formal recognition of this church as Chicago landmark. So, Mayor Lightfoot, city council members, please designate St. Michael the Argangel Church as a Chicago landmark. Please give the landmark status to both, the majestic exterior and breathtaking interior of this building. Mr. Ward Miller of Preservation Chicago once wrote, "The faithful built these churches with pennies, nickels, and dimes, and they were given to the archdioceses to steward and maintain. When that can't happen anymore, we need to think of other solutions." It's worth mentioning that the parish and surrounding neighborhood are now mostly African-American and Latino. And I continue quoting Mr. Miller of Preservation Chicago, "A whole sense of community is lost here. It's more than just a faith-based place of worship. It's a gateway to these communities. It's a cornerstone to these communities. When these true landmarks in our community are closed, not only do we lose a religious side, but we lose all the human services, the counselors, the food pantries, et cetera." Mayor Lightfoot, city council members, speaking on behalf of the faithful and members of surrounding neighborhood, I'm asking that you please allow Commissioner to move forward with landmark designation for the exterior and interior of St. Michael the Argangel Church building. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
For your comments. Our next speaker is Peter Shisnoika.
United Northwest Side is an independent political organization on the far northwest side of Chicago, committed to working toward a more just and equitable city. Justice and equity demands that we consider not just the stated intent of our government's action, but the likely impact. It is this impact that requires us to condemn Mayor Lightfoot's proposal to use the civil asset forfeiture process to address gun violence. Mayor Lightfoot's proposed victims' justice ordinance would allow the city to file civil lawsuits against people who it claims have assets related to gang activity in order to seize their property. Notably, the law would permit the city to seize those assets before the accused person is held by a court to be liable, and would shift the burden of proof to an accused person to prove the negative, that they are not associated with a gang. Because the prosecution would be civil, not criminal, people accused would not be entitled to attorneys and must retain them at their own expense. The problems with the CPD's gang database, which would provide the city with targets for its asset collection efforts, are well documented. Chicago's inspector general has determined that the database is deeply flawed, riddled with errors, and subject to abuse. Mayor Lightfoot herself promised to replace the database when she campaigned for her office, but two years into her term has made no significant steps to do so. The database is made up of 95% Black and Latino Chicagoans, and it is these residents and their families who would continue to be targeted for further unnecessary interactions with the legal system if Mayor Lightfoot's ordinance is adopted. It is unsurprising that a former prosecutor like Mayor Lightfoot's only vision for a safer Chicago relies on punitive measures that would entangle innocent people in the legal system with ramifications that could follow them for the rest of their lives. We join a broad coalition of organizations across the city in condemning this empty gesture towards safety which relies on discredited and discriminatory tools. We call on the city council to reject the proposed ordinance and to instead focus its efforts on holistic efforts to prevent the root causes of violence, including lack of jobs and opportunities, a proliferation of weapons, and desperation during an ongoing pandemic with a limited support from our government. Speaking personally now, I recall CPD Superintendent Leroy Martin saying that he ran the baddest gang in town, while he defended the torturer purge. I wonder if Martin's Bureau of Internal Affairs chief would be subject to civil asset forfeiture under this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shisnoika. Ms. Giersbahn, are you there? Please press star 69 to unmute. Your Honor, there are no other speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
All right, this concludes the public comment period. Next up, resolutions. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two resolutions today. One honoring Secretary of State Jesse White, who has joined us, is in the witness box, and the second resolution in recognition of Black History Month. Alderman Mitchell. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move to the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these two resolutions.
There are no objections, so ordered. In the interest of time, we will forego the formal reading of the first resolution. Instead, we will take comments from members of the body on the resolution honoring Secretary of State Jesse White. I'll let you back. Got you. I'll let you back. All right, we'll start. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor for us to have Jesse White here with us today and all of us in the city of Chicago to recognize his leadership. As the Secretary of State of all of Illinois, he has done an outstanding job in that office, expanding library hours, which oftentimes people don't think that the Secretary of State does, working to expand organ donors with your driver's license. But his work in Chicago is also exemplary. His work with young people, the Jesse White tumblers, hundreds and probably thousands of young men have been able to see his leadership through many, many, many decades. I had the opportunity as a state representative to work with him. I have been a huge fan of his for many years, as all of us are. We are glad that he is here in good health, and he has served an outstanding job as our Secretary of State. And Jesse, we wish you nothing but happiness and health for many, many more years to come. God bless you and thank you for all you've done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too also would like to commend and thank Secretary White for the work that he's done. Not as in his, what I call in your official capacity, but in your capacity as a member of the community and a community leader. You were doing work in the community and for the people long before being elected. And I think that is the true mark of a public servant. It's not what you do for the camera, but it's what you do in your day-to-day living. Just a, just a short story, everybody is, Chairman Osterman talked about knows of the Jesse White tumblers. And as a child, I can recall going to a Bulls game and seeing the Jesse White tumblers do their thing. And they always conclude the show with a guy look like he running from around the block and he come and he hit that trampoline thing and he flies through the air and lands and everybody gives him a high five. So I got the thought at home to run up the stairs, jump the bed, and hit some and tore up my mother's part of her china cabinet that she had up there and tried to understand why. What possessed you to do this? And, and I said, you know, I was watching those guys at the game. And my father, he just shook his head as he always did when I did dumb stuff. And he said, I get it. And after that, the next time I went to a Bulls game, he actually introduced me to you. I was a young kid. I will never forget that. But then fast forward into the nineties when I got involved politically. I had a chance to work with members of the twenty-seventh ward, young Democrats. And the, and what I will say is that the organizational structure is something that you all had then have now that really is missing from politics. And if we had more structure and more people trying to find the art and compromise to move everyone forward, this not only our city, but our country would be in a much better place. So I just want to just thank you for the, your life's work and, and the civility that you have brought to politics. And, and it's the way that we should do business and not be so polarized. And I think that out of everything that you've done in life and in public service, you'll be remembered most. I'm not, I shouldn't say be remembered most, but you are the one that really always tries to keep it even, keep it level. While there may be disagreements, you've always been the type of individual to try to find a solution to the challenges that, that, that we have to deal with in this, in this business. So again, I just want to thank you on behalf of the residents in the twenty-eighth ward, not only for your service, public service, but for your community service. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. Now, Mr. White is like this awesome, really individual. And like today, Mr. White, I want to say that I'm happy to give you your flowers while you're still living, so that you can see and know how many people love you and the effect that you personally have had on people down through the years. So you've always, in my current position, kept an open door policy, allowed me to come in and give me great advice. Whether I liked it or not, you were always honest and truthful about whatever position you, that I came in and talked to you about. So I want to say I appreciate you for allowing me to sit at the feet of wisdom. Now, I too got my kids' stories. Jesse White never missed the eighth ward regular Democratic Organization picnic. And so my entire life is I saw Mr. White come in. He was like a hero. So for all the children that you influenced in a positive way and changed their lives, Mr. White, you awesome. You have touched so many lives, and I'm almost sure that Alderman Burnett is going to talk about this as he talks about who you are. But you have transformed people's lives merely by giving them options and opportunities. And so today I'm grateful to be able to say thank you for helping communities of color, not just where you live, but all across the city. So today I want to say again to you, you're an amazing leader, you're an amazing person, and you've changed lives and even has changed my life. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman now Austin. Austin.
That sounds like Osterman, so. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I was really writing down some notes in regards to Mr. White on when I started, where I'm at now. But I do remember an organization with George Dunn when I did first meet you as a young person, working for a summer job. But what resonates the most for me, and I know that with my community, is when we had our first new library, and that's our West Pullman Library. I thought that was the greatest day that we could ever have with the Secretary of State. But I come to find out that that was not my greatest day. My greatest day was when you came out to our little small hospital, Roseland Hospital regarding organ donation. It was special to me because my daughter was an organ transplant. She was a kidney transplant. And for that day, for you to come out with the wagon of the, the truck that had the organ donations on it will be forever resonated in our family. I also introduced a great friend of mine who just passed away that I introduced him to your organ donation program, and that's Mr. Lafayette Gatlin. So for those individuals that have been true in my life, we thank you for what you've given to us. So I will say to you, Mr. White, if I can help somebody along the way, I know that my living will not have been in vain. And you have truly, truly helped so many along the way. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. Mr. White, I'm reminded of something that Reverend Evans once told me. He said, "The people you bless will not always be the ones who bless you back." What made me think of that is the story that you told me in your office. And it talked about people that you were loyal to and that when you ran for Secretary of State, that did not come back to you. But you ran anyway and you won. And for that, I am proud of. Because back in nineteen ninety-seven, I didn't even know that story until I sat with you and you told me that. But because when I was a child, I met someone who poured into me. Because I was watching my uncle, who were a week apart, tumble on your tumbling team. But you would always gather all the youth around and you encourage them and tell us we could be anything that we wanted to be. I believe that then and I believe that now. I also believe that when it was said that you can't be what you cannot see. And as we celebrate this Black History Month and we celebrate you, I'm reminded that I could not be a God-fearing man if it wasn't for Reverend Evans. I'm reminded that I couldn't even be an accountant if it wasn't for Roland Burris, who was the first black comptroller. Because it was tough majoring in accounting. But I'm also reminded that I couldn't even aspire to be Secretary of State if you had not pushed forward and ran anyway and became the first black Secretary of State. In other words, I went able to be, be able to be what I couldn't see. Reverend Evans always taught, always told me that if you're going to be a shepherd, your sheep should be able to touch you. One thing I know about you, Secretary White, is that especially the young people, but all of us, was always able to access you. Always. You've never not returned a phone call that I've made to you. And for that, I appreciate. We are spiritual beings, living in human experience, and only that which we do for Christ will last. God says, "When you've done unto the least of us, you've done unto Him." Your works, Mr. White, has always touched the least of us. And for that, that's what will last forever. Thank you for your service and I truly appreciate you. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mi nombre es Jesús Blanco. That is the way Secretary Jesse White used to introduce himself to every Hispanic person he used to come across. That's how I first met him. ¿Cómo te llamas? Y me dice, yo me llamo Jesús Blanco, Jesse White. And so, you know, you've always been a great politician. It's amazing how much impact you have had in the lives of so many throughout your years of service. You know, when the media loves you, that means that you're beyond the perception that we all have of politicians. There is no person in the media that does not adore you. You are a true representation of what most of us aspire to be in politics. You're honest, you're very decent, accessible, and for that, and a great human being. You know, one thing that I don't like about you, the only thing was that you played in the mayor leagues for the Cubs and never played for the White Sox. So in your next life, please make sure that you play with the White Sox. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The chair recognizes Alderman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to speak on behalf of this resolution of Secretary White. When we were talking about Black history, you came to mind, and today is a day that you can get both your retirement and honor you as the first black to be elected Secretary of State, State of Illinois. We're proud to know that you have served our state with dignity, honor, respect, and intelligence. We appreciate the work that you've done from the beginning of times. You never let your gods down. If not, you would tumble over someone. So I have seen the most important thing that I know is you reaching out to young peoples. I have to tell you, you touch my heart in just teaching them, learning how to read, learning how to go and get their GED. You may have even forgot you'd had classes that were being taught under your leadership to help communities where you saw children who were struggling, not graduating. But you took time out, even in the midst of all the work that you did, you put the human touch to something that could change lives. You have impacted the life of Erie, Chicagoan, residents in the state of Illinois, throughout the country by your work. And you are well deserved to be recognized today on your retirement, but also the success and the legacy that you leave for others to follow. Every time something come out of my colleague's mouth here, I got to check with Jesse White. So we know who's the man. Jesse White is the man. Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman DePaulitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I'll make mine as quick as possible. Secretary White, you are by far one of the greatest things in the state of Illinois. My father, God rest his soul, was a humongous fan of yours. And it always said that you are one of those people that go out of your way to give away of yourself, meaning you do everything for everybody else and think, and put yourself second to everyone else. And that means the world, meant the world to him, who was my biggest hero, and it means the world to the state of Illinois. And I want you to know that is appreciated and it is recognized. Thank you for all you've done. And please, sir, enjoy your retirement. Thank you again. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman DePaulitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of this resolution. Representative White, I want to take you back to the seventies, to the mid-seventies. And there was a group of African-American men that owned a small little restaurant, some small little restaurants called McDonald's. And you had this group of tumblers. And you were looking for a sponsor. And this group, the Black McDonald's Operators Association, which was founded, my father was one of the founders, they, they took you all as, as a sponsor. And I remember, I think I had to have been about sixteen at the time. And the first time I saw them was at the, the Black Ball that the McDonald's operators had. And I had an opportunity to meet you and you were very kind. And fast forward a little bit later, when I was down in Springfield, and you were still very kind and hospitable. When you became Secretary of State and when I became Alderman, our paths continued to cross. And what you have been consistent at throughout your whole tenure has been reaching out to the community and grabbing our youth. And it comes from a day back in the time when successful black businesses and black leaders and black community members reached in and grabbed our children and found things for them to do and presented opportunities. And that's why we did not have the same problems that we are seeing today. You set examples, you had values, and you communicated that to the youth. Be it tumbling, be it with your reading programs, I don't know whether many people know that you're the state's chief librarian. And that is so important, you know, in order to be a leader, you got to be a reader. And so the ways in which you have been able to morph over the years and still manage to keep your hand on the youth and keep your commitment to raising strong, confident black adults is very admirable and is not done. So I just want to say as someone that has been a supporter and a cheerleader over the past decades, congratulations. You know I love you and happy retirement. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Harrison. The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. Mr. White, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your public service. I want to thank you for your mentorship. I want to thank you for always being accessible. When I was running, the first time I was running for office, we came by your turkey giveaway. And you were out there passing out turkeys. And it was And it was cold, and I had on my gloves, I had on layer gloves. And about an hour in, I'm thinking to myself, when, when is this going to end? Because you were passing out a lot of turkeys. And you stayed there, it had to be three or four hours. And it showed me the definition of service. You didn't have to be there, there were mountains of people there handing out turkeys. But you stayed there until the very last person and handed out the very last turkey. And, you know, I thought to myself, if I'm going to be a servant, if I'm going to serve my community, I want to serve like him. And I want to be the last person there, and I want everybody on my staff to understand that, one, I'm going to be there, but more importantly, I'm going to be there for my people. And that's what you did, and that's what you showed me. And so I want to thank you for that. I, I hope that you enjoy your retirement. I know that we'll see you around, and, and, and good luck, and God bless you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Mr. White, Mr. Secretary, we could be here all day talking about you. I don't think people want to be here all day, but an hour or 45 minutes isn't enough to say all the, all the good things about you and all the things you've done. But you are certainly the most respected politician in Illinois. Probably could have ran for any office you wanted. You could have been governor. Probably if you ran for president in Illinois, you would have won by a landslide. But I, I don't think you want that job. But I just want to thank you for all you've done, especially for the, for the kids or youth, whatever, or for our young men. Every time I go see your tumblers, I'm just, I'm just amazed as a white man that couldn't jump very high when I see some of these kids sky into the ceiling. It's just unbelievably awesome. And I do call your officers from time to time. I call your chief of staff, and every time I call your officers to help with something, they're very responsive. So just appreciate all you've done for everybody, really. I mean, I, kids, adults, the way you, the way you ran your office, the professionalism, serving our country. Just congratulate, a year early congratulations, because you still have a year to go, but, for your retirement. But congratulations, thanks all you have done for our state, our city, and, and the youth of America. God bless you, and God bless everybody in your, in your Jesse White tumblers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Secretary White, I would be remiss if I didn't speak today, and my mother would talk about me profusely. As you know, and I don't think the council knows, you went to school with my mother and father at Alabama State University. And you've probably known me longer than I've known me. And, you know, you've been a part of my life as far as I can remember. You've been the epitome of a strong black man, somebody that rises up, that's reached out and helped the youth in the city of Chicago and all over the state. And, and I'm so proud to, to, to call you somebody that I know and respect and seek advice from, from time to time. But I, I bring you wishes from my mother Celeste. I told her you were coming today, she told me, please tell you hello. She's always asking about you if I see you. And you always do the same, the first thing when you see me, "How's Celeste doing?" And I say, "She's great." But again, thank you for the work that you've done for the state. We owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude for everything that you've done. And I will dare say continue to do, because I know that your work has not stopped and will not stop, particularly for those affecting the youth. Again, congratulations to you on this day. But more importantly, long life and health. You're doing a great job, and I know you're going to continue to do great things here in the state of Illinois. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to give honor to this great man and to be associated with this resolution. Secretary White, you are a State of Illinois treasurer, treasurer, I should say, and a true public servant. I mean, I think if you look up the word "public servant" in the dictionary, your picture would be there. I am delighted to honor and celebrate a man who has lived his life uplifting communities, helping adults and families, and mentoring young people. I know that you come from humble beginnings in Alton, Illinois, and I had the opportunity of going through Alton to see your hometown and to travel across the state when I was seeking to fill your shoes. I will say that you are beloved across the state. People always talk about you as a man of tremendous energy, a friend of all communities, and someone who can be depended upon to be where he's supposed to be in those towns and cities across the state. I have enjoyed working with you as an Alderman with your office. And I'm working on some special projects and initiatives in my community. And I will remember the time that I came to see you and you took me around your office. And I realized the depth of the love and appreciation for you throughout this entire state. But we had a moment to stop at your back wall, where you had all the fish on the wall. And I just want to say, go fishing. Go fishing. Enjoy the rest of your life. Don't worry about this stuff. Leave it all behind and enjoy your life. I want to thank you for your service to our state, and I look forward to our continued relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to be associated with this resolution. We've talked about Secretary White's service. But we also, he also served in 101st Airborne. It always said that, didn't know what was wrong with him for jumping out of a plane that was functioning correctly. But he's a true hero to Illinois and to this country. And when the, and when the books are written and the top five elected officials that represented Illinois, Mr. White will be in the top five. I have the pleasure, I've had the pleasure of being recognized by Mr. White. And I have one of those license plates in my office for the acknowledgement of being a Latino leader. And I can tell you that Mr. White has done a tremendous job making sure that he's reaching back to grab the youth with this tumbling program. And it's been, it's, it's awesome to, to see Mr. White and be able to recognize him, as was mentioned before, while he's still here. So, Mr. White, congratulations on your retirement, and I look forward to seeing you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Vegas. The chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to rise in support of this resolution. Mr. White, Mr. White exemplifies what public service is. I would like to share that even before I was an elected representative in my ward, I had the pleasure to work with Mr. Jesse White as the president of the Hispanic Leadership Council. I can tell you that I haven't seen an elected official spending so much time directly with our students and investing in literacy as we should. Under Mr. Jesse White, the Hispanic Leadership Council, which is an organization made up of community groups across the city, receives support by more than anything else, the respect and inclusion that elected officials often talked about, but very rarely practice. During the time that I had the opportunity to see Mr. White, Mr. White's actions, we have seen more investment in GED classes, in ESA classes, and more importantly than anything else, reaching to those who could not even read and write. This is the testimony of an elected official who not only also, aside of investing in our adults, investing on our most vulnerable communities, also care for our youth. Today, as we embark in a debate about what we need to do to curb violence, I cannot tell you that there's no other example here in the city of Chicago of someone who not only talks the talk, but walk the walk and have pushed to curb violence with investment, with mentorship programs, caring for our youth. The tumbling team that Mr. White created that now is about to have over 60 years, a lifetime of service, that's how we curb violence, with jobs, with investment, treating our, our communities with respect and dignity. And I think this today is a very meaningful resolution of someone I deeply admire for their commitment to invest in our communities, to believe in our communities. That's how we're going to address the issues in our city. So, Mr. White, thank you for your years of service. I hope that you enjoy your retirement, because you have opened the gate and the doors and give us an example of how we serve our communities. And the next Secretary of State has certainly big shoes to fill. So thank you again, Mr. White, for your service.
The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listening to all these accolades and these great speeches to Mr. Jesse White, as I know him as Jesse Blanco, because when I met him when I was a young man, my young adults, he's like, "Call me Jesse Blanco," and we started laughing. But I, I understood, as I was in front of him, what kind of man he was. He was a man with integrity, and he loved to serve his community, especially coming from, you know, what he did in the West Side, Cabrini Green and so forth. I rise to this occasion as myself, as Alderman Cardona, but also for the residents of the 31st Ward, because we have a express station there for driver's licenses and also donors. And the, the facility is getting utilized all the time. And I thank you for taking a chance and putting one of those facilities in my ward, even though it was many years ago. I, I want to thank you for that. But I also want to take the opportunity, thank you for what truly is a public servant, not a politician. You are truly a public servant because of what you've done in our community and also for the state, and also for our country, serving for our country in your younger years. But I truly appreciate everything you have done for us, opening these doors, and me looking up to you, what truly what a public servant is. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Cardona. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this distinguished Superman. In all my years growing up, you've always been Superman to me. Here I am, 21 years old and pending, and I can't even get through yoga. And, and you in your season years, you're still doing flips. Like that 21 years impending. You know, you know, I'm working on my veteran housing in my ward, and, and I just can't wait to honor it with your name. We definitely going to miss you tremendously, and happy retirement to you. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. I too joined this resolution. And obviously, all the kudos to Secretary Jesse White. I first met him when I was appointed to the Veterans Advisory Committee at the state level, and I began a longstanding relationship with, with him. His success is just about excellence in public service, and that's why you're so loved by, by everyone. And the Jesús Blanco, my colleague alluded to, it's all true, because in, in our part of the hood, that's, that's what people know you for. And the reason they know you, that is because you are so approachable and likable, and you make a habit of approaching people, treating them as you like to be treated. And, and more than that, really, to be honest with you. So your excellence when it comes to public service, you can see that, because people like to be treated just like you would like to be treated, with respect. And I think that that's why they respect you so much. I can see my colleague Walter Burnett sort of following in those footsteps in terms of how he approaches politicians and he approaches the way you approach people. Walter's very approachable. I don't know if he's going to change his name to Jesús Blanco. I mean, he could. But then Walter, Waltedio is the translation Walter. I don't know if you want to switch that. Waltedio. What do you think? Yeah, right, right. Yeah, Walter's a lot, lot, lot sexier. I agree with you. But that's what, that's what you did. So you came across as a genuine, it's, it's a people person. And I don't know if we, if we have that nowadays, you know? Maybe we can get Jason to call himself Jacinto. And maybe cut across Hispanics and Latinos, we all get together, maybe bestest map finally. But thank you for leading us down that path of brotherhood. And I think we can take a little bit of that, maybe put it to use here in this body. Gracias, señor Jesús Blanco.
Pardon us. The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to honor Mr. White. Mr. White, you tapped in a long time ago, probably before most of us were born, that to be true to the essence of who you are, to be true to who God made you to be, we must give ourselves to others, and that's what you've done. And countless thousands and thousands of, of people have benefited, especially our youth. But I also want to thank you that you serve as a reminder that we should all be doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Secretary White, thank you tremendously for your service to our state, to our community. I think everybody has mentioned a number of things. I think what resonates with me is all the years of teaching you did. And I'm just glad that you really never have stopped teaching. Just recently, I saw you at the city championship basketball game. And not only were your tumblers out there, but you were out there too, leading them, leading them by example, and that really, truly resonated with me. It's hard to be both respected and loved so effortlessly, and you just do it. The more I think about it, you may be able to solve our map issue. Seriously, we need to, literally. But truly enjoy your retirement, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Smith. And folks, let me just say before Alderwoman Smith, we still have a long list. We got about 10 more people. And then Alderman Burnett will back, clean up, so just be patient.
Thank you, Secretary White. I rise in support of this resolution. I'm particularly, I, I want to make a particular note of your incredible dedication to your community, to your immediate community. I know that you graduated from Waller High School, which is now Lincoln Park High School. You were a star athlete there. And you have been based in the Cabrini area for your entire life. And that dedication, I think, is, is so worthy of praise. And you have helped so many young people there. But you also, when you became Secretary of State, you came into office on the waves of scandal from former Secretary of State George Ryan. And you immediately pledged to restore the integrity of that office, which you did. You created a strong inspector general more than 10 years before we did here in city council. You initiated strong efforts against things like fundraising on the job and things like that. In short, you have lived your political career with your integrity front and center as part of your duties as a public servant. And for that, you have been inspiration to all of Illinois, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadd.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Secretary White, we're back in the back row at this point in time, all the way in the back. back. Thank you for your service. I have listened to so many of the wonderful stories. I've learned more about you in listening to my colleagues as they share their memories and their praise of you. And I'd like to give thanks from the 49th Ward, the residents of the 49th Ward. Coming to Rogers Park, touching the lives of our residents and our youth has been something that's impacted me. But I also, in hearing all the praise and the way that we're lifting you up today, I think that I see you as a model of the public servant and the elected official, and the way that you've governed yourself in your office, as something that's not just for us to lift up and put on a pedestal, but to emulate. So, I see the record and the dedication that you've put forth as a challenge to everybody here, as a challenge to everybody who would deem to hold public office, to conduct themselves with the same integrity. So, I appreciate you for your service to our state, to our youth, and also for the model that you've set and the challenge that just your being here, I think, brings to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hadden. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
No, thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to be able to join with the other members of the City Council and paying tribute to a true gentleman. You know, those of us that went to law school learned a phrase that is often used in legal briefs, and the Latin phrase is sui generis. For those of you that haven't studied the law, the translation of sui generis is one of a kind. Mr. White is sui generis, one of a kind. And as he approaches his biblical fourscore and 10, Alderman Harris alluded to the fact that the best part of this resolution, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, the council is, it doesn't begin with the words, "Whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom." But this is not the first time that this city council has paid tribute to Mr. White. I remember just about 14 years ago, when he had the idea, the concept, the inspiration to locate a community center on Division Street. At any rate, as that, as that process was continuing on, somehow or another, this bureaucracy in this historic building decided perhaps it wasn't a good use of the taxpayers' money. And it was right at the time when it was so critical to have this action of the city council take place. Well, it was Alderman Burnett, who is like a son to the secretary, who has learned the same loyalty that the secretary has demonstrated his entire life, that persuaded this city council that this matter should be adopted. And I think, Mr. Secretary, you would agree that but for that action of the city council, the building there would not exist today. And those thousands and thousands of kids that have the opportunity to go there and to tumble with you and to learn from your legacy would not have that chance. It's one of the few times in, over the half-century that I've been here, that I've seen the city council take an action that had not been approved by the department from which it emerged. And so, I'm pleased to be able to join with all the members today to pay tribute to this great man, this man who is sui generis, one of a kind. May God continue to bless you and grant you the help that we all envy, Mr. Secretary. God bless. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Tallya Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Mr. White, I want to just give you my sincere thank you. And saying that, you know, you leave a rich legacy, one of service. And as you begin your new chapter after your life in public service, I want to give my sincere thanks for your service in our military, your service in public office. But I think what really stands out when we, and when I think of Secretary White, I think of the thousands and thousands of lives that you've changed through your tumbling program now, and I believe it's 62nd year or so. You've made an immeasurable difference in their lives, ensuring that they learn discipline and they learn leadership, characters that will stay with them for the rest of their lives. And it takes a very special heart to be committed to that for so long. So, I want to give you my sincere thank you. And I'm honored, as well as my colleagues, to be a part of sharing in your legacy, something that will live on in this great state for many, many decades and years to come. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Tallya Pharoah. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I will try to keep this brief. Secretary State, thank you for all the work that you have done for our city and our state, from being a coach, from your work as an athlete, from your work as a teacher, a soldier, and a politician. I am forced to ask myself how old this guy is. However old you are, you don't look it. You've done, you've done a lot in your time. And of all your accomplishments, I'm most impressed and I'm most amazed of the work that you've done with our youth, especially our at-risk youth. And you may never know or never be able to realize the impact that you have had, your reach, but know that we fully believe that you have reached to your fullest potential. On behalf of the residents of the 45th Ward, on behalf of Chicago and the state of Illinois, I sincerely thank you for all the work that you have done in your life. And I look forward to continue seeing you at events and speaking with you. You've been a gentleman through and through, so thank you.
I too rise to support this resolution. But I can't say that I'm extremely shocked by Alderman Burke. I thought Walter was his son. But in all fairness, Mr. White, I just wanted to take a few minutes just to recognize you for being the person that you are. You know, I have looked up to you and tried to emulate you by working with the youth, because we know if we are going to change our community, we have to change it with our youth. And like Alderman Lopez stated, you don't just talk the talk, you walk the walk. You work Monday through Friday, but then on the weekends, you're out there working with those kids, not only being a role model, but for them to be able to touch you, like Alderman Moore stated, that means more than anything in the world for people to be able to lay hands on you and have a conversation with you. You have always been a truly humble servant, and I appreciate you for everything that you have done. I want to congratulate you on your retirement, but we know we'll be seeing you out there on the battlefields with those kids. But thank you so much for doing everything that you have done. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President, and I too stand in support of this resolution. Alderman Beal, I knew Walter was not Secretary White's son. He's more like the prodigal son because he pledged sigma and not kappa. Secretary White, I want to thank you. I wanted to become a young Dem because of the structure and the respect and the spirit of excellence and the leadership that you had to mobilize so many young people back in the '90s and the early 2000s and go into those meetings on the West Side. I also want to thank you for showing leaders like myself to never forget where you come from. As a member of Union Baptist Church and being with Deacon Dyson and Pastor Alexander, I've seen that side of you, and you always willing to help others seeking higher office, being right there with them, holding their hands, giving them advice and what to say and how to carry yourselves at the church. But you never forgot about our seniors and our youth. So, thank you so, sir, for your leadership. Thank you for showing us how to do it for 60 years. I don't think I've got 60 years in me, but I sure do strive to be just an ounce of a leader that you have been to our community and to the great state of Illinois. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to give you your flowers, yet while you can still smell them. Happy retirement.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
I rise to be associated with this Secretary State White. I'm in the chief seats behind the pole, so no worries. But it's truly an honor to rise, to recognize such a distinguished career. And on behalf of my colleagues, particularly those in the southwest side of Chicago and the residents of the 22nd Ward, I just wanted to briefly state, thank you for your service. Thank you for your exemplary leadership and your mentorship to so many, and we look forward to continuing to count on you to be able to leverage your deep thought on how we move our great city, county, and state forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas, and then I believe Alderman Burnett is up.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I met Jesus Blanco many years ago when John Merle was in the 44th Ward, so I'm dating myself here. But he said, "Watch that guy. Watch that man. He's going to do good things," and that you have. I want to thank my colleagues for the words that they've said about you today, very true, very accurate, and you served us well. And I thank you, and I appreciate everything you did for the citizens of the state of Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Raboyas. And last but not least, Chair recognizes Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you very much. I also stand in support of this resolution. Thank you, Mayor, for introducing the resolution. Thank all of my colleagues for your comments, for Mr. White. No, he's not my father, but he's like my father. Let me, I know you all touched on a lot of things about Mr. White. He's a great statesman, a great politician. He's a father to a whole bunch of people, thousands of kids from Cabrini-Green. So, I was worried about doing this. I tried to write it down, what happened?
It's all right.
I'm cool.
It's love. It's love, baby.
So, what y'all don't know, they used to call him the hoodlum priest, because he looked for the good in everybody. So, you know, in Cabrini-Green, we had two sides. We had folks and we had peoples, right? Disciples, viceroy stones, all that side, and it was divided by Division Street. And the tumblers, the tumblers would get on his tumbling team, and they would have to go over to the other community to tumble. But because they were Jesse White tumblers, nobody bothered them. So, that's the only way that disciple, the folks went on to the people's area, because they was Jesse White tumblers. And he would break down every gangbanger. They all called to Mr. White. They can be the toughest, they can be killers, whatever they was, they bowed down to Mr. White, because he did not play, but also he helped all of their families. He raised them in school. You know, he, Mr. White was born in the '30s, and he went through the depression. He was born through the time of the depression. And Cabrini-Green, before it was Cabrini-Green, it was a mixed community. It was a lot of Italians, Irish, Latinos. Joe Barrios grew up in Cabrini-Green, Latinos, Asians, Jewish. And all of them were poor, and he grew up in that era with all of those poor folks. And even though he grew up with them, and he was poor, and they were poor, you know, he, and there were still times that African-Americans still got the short end of the stick. A lot of folks look at Mr. White, he's a statesman, he loved everybody, everybody loved him, but he been through some stuff too, right? Growing up in the neighborhood. And, but Mr. White never would allow those kind of things to hold him back from showing his love for people. So, he, he grew up over there in the area with all these folks, and it was challenging times. You know, he was young, he went to school, he was a star basketball player at Waller High School, playing with Jew, Jewish guys, Italian guys, all nationalities, and he was a star player. Matter of fact, he still bragged today about how he got the most free throw shots, the highest amount of free throw shots of anybody else at Waller High School. And if you close to a basketball court, he'll show you what he could do. But he went through that time, and we're talking about black history. He went through that time, even though, you know, he was cool with everybody because of athletics, he still had to suffer through discrimination. You know, a lot of folks don't know, he got, when he went to Alabama State with Sawyer's father, Dr. King, he went to Dr. King's church. Dr. King was his minister. And a lot of those guys who was with Dr. King was around their school. Some of them even went to school with him. So, he went through that. He went through all of the things that we went through with discrimination, segregation, you know, white folks drink here, black folks drink there. You go through that door, you go through that door. He went through all that stuff. But in spite of all of that, he still had a strong heart to pierce people's hearts to get them to accept his love, and he loved them. You know, so he's a different person. Even today, you know, all the time I've been with him, he would say stuff like, "That's all right, Walter. Don't worry about that. That's all right. No matter how they treat you, that's all right. Don't worry about it. We'll be all right." And it always turned out, it comes out all right. And he's like, "You just be, keep being good." I had to be the bad guy in our organization, because he never says no to anybody, even if they don't do nothing, right? So, I had to be the one like, "Man, you better get out of here." But he's like, "That's all right, Walter." He helps him anyway, right? And I thank God that he has that kind of heart. I wouldn't be here. Even a guy who, you know, had a record, made a mistake, still gave me an opportunity. Allowed me to run his organization and let it grow. And our organization, you know, is mixed. It's Jewish, Italian, Polish, everybody is in our organization. He even helped so many women through our organization to grow. But a lot of folks don't know, you know, Mr. White made it to the minors with the Cubs. He got recruited, because he went on to, went to Alabama State baseball and basketball scholarship. He was a star. He made it to the minors with the Cubs. A lot of folks don't know that the reason why he didn't make it to the majors was because he had an interview with a white reporter, a lady, and some of the players saw him at the interview with the lady. And they went and told everybody in the Cub organization, and he didn't make the majors, because they thought he was messing with the lady, but he was doing an interview with the lady. They thought he was talking to the white woman. A lot of folks don't know, he went through that. He lived through that. Folks look at him funny, because he support different people or different ethnic groups, but they don't know- but they don't know his heart is prayer. He really loved people and cared for people. He was there with Willie Banks. He would be right there with him. He's one of the best players. But he suffered that, but he didn't let that hold him back. He didn't let it hold him back, and he didn't act like them. Because they were racist, he was not racist. He refused to be racist, and he would tell the tumblers, he would tell all of us, "No one should hate anyone because of their ethnicity or the color of their skin." And, you know, a lot of folks trip on us because, yeah, we support white candidates. We support Latino candidates. We support everybody in spite of what everybody else say because we look at who they are and their hearts. And that's how Mr. White is. And he always say, "That's all right. Forget that dumb stuff. This is what it's about." And he always look forward. He always, you know, be above everybody else and do what he have to do to make things right. I learned this thing about, you know, some folks may hear me say, you know, "Don't get mad, don't get even, get ahead." I learned that from Mr. White. He don't say that, but he lives that. He lives getting ahead. And I'm gonna tell you, any and everything he gets, he gives it back to people. Any and everything he gets. And Cabrini-Green, we got so much stuff, it was crazy. I mean, Mr. White, folks would donate bat mittens to him. Everybody in Cabrini-Green be running around with a bat mitt. Don't even know how to play. Hockey sticks. We was playing hockey in Cabrini-Green, y'all believe it or not. We played hockey in Cabrini-Green because Mr. White gave us hockey sticks. Mr. White would give us all kind of equipment because people would give it to him because they know he would give it to people. You know, people just know him as dealing with the tumblers, but he did so much more. You know, folks got refrigerators and stoves and you have no idea, shoes and coats. And, you know, he just, and if people didn't have nothing, he'd go get it for them because that's who he is. You know, when he first ran for Recorder Deeds, I was a secretary. I was a secretary, no, I was a sergeant-at-arms for the 42nd Ward Democratic Organization with George Dunn, who's both of our guardian angel. And, uh, and I asked Mr. Dunn, when Mr. White district changed and he ran for Recorder Dees, I said, "Mr. Dunn, can I go help Mr. White run for Recorder Dees?" He said, "Yes." So, I'm Deputy Campaign Manager. Margaret Houlihan was the campaign manager. So, Margaret would send me out and I would drive Mr. White all day, every day, all over the county to campaign. And, but we will always drift away from the campaign because the only thing he cared about was the tumbling team. So, he would have to go to a campaign stop, and it was my job to make him go to the campaign stop, but we had to go do a tumbling show first. So, the campaign stop had to go second. So, here I am, I'm driving the van. I had to drive the van. I wasn't a tumbling, my brother was a tumbling. But with Mr. White during the campaign, I had to become a tumbling. So, I had to drive the van. I had to help with the mask. I had to bend over. I had to hold guys up. I had to do all that stuff just to get him to the campaign stop because he did not want to go to the campaign stop because his first love is helping those kids. And a lot of folks don't know, tumblers get paid. And, you know, my family had the benefit of getting paid. All of us was on public aid. My younger brother, my kid brother, you know, he was on the tumbling team. He's one of the guys who flew over folks. While I was incarcerated, my family was eaten because of Jesse White tumbling team. Because my brother was on the Jesse White tumbling team and my brother was getting paid for doing shows. He was in a Coca-Cola commercial, he was getting residuals with Jesse White because he was on that tumbling team, and that helped my mom with her public aid check. And so many people in Cabrini-Green live better because of Jesse White. All those kids was making more money than their mamas because their mothers was only getting public aid. And I know Mr. White got to go to an event, so I'm a stop. But I can say so much more about Mr. White. He has a heart of gold, and what you see is what you get. He's for real. He loved people unconditionally. He should be honored, and I thank you for honoring him for Black History Month because he's truly a real hero and a living legend for black history. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Secretary, I know you have to go, so I will also be very brief. But I think you heard adulation and praise from all quarters of this city. And that's a great testament to who you are, how you've lived your life. And let me just say two quick things. First, I want to thank Alderman Jason Ervin for recommending that we honor you on Black History Month. He did this in his individual capacity, but of course, as his capacity as the Chair of the Black Caucus. I also want to just say a couple of things. You know, we know that he formed the Jesse White tumblers, but in 1959. So, think about the tens of thousands of young people who have benefited from being under his tutelage. And Alderman King mentioned that he was at the City Public League. He wasn't just present, he was coaching, he was directing, and making sure that the discipline that he had taught these tumblers through the decades was still, that standard was still being upheld. Last thing I'll say is this, I think virtually every person, and me included, who's addressed you today, called you Mr. White, Mr. White. You know as well as I do, in the history of our country, there aren't many black men who've been called Mr. with the kind of respect and adulation that you heard today. I think about my own father, the struggles that he had growing up in the segregated South, never having the respect because he was a man of little education, a worker, and would have loved to have been here in this moment to see you get the kind of adulation and praise that you so richly deserve. Very few public servants in our state in history have the kind of background that you do. A star athlete, a war hero, paratrooper, jumping out of planes. Alderman Vegas is right, but that's because he's a Marine. And he thinks anybody who's not a Marine is of lesser ilk. A teacher for many years and an elected official, but I say a public servant. So, sir, thank you so much for gracing us with your presence here today. I would ask the body to give Mr. Secretary the privileges of the floor to address the body. There are no objections, so ordered. Mr. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Anna Valencia. Lives in this wonderful body. It's an honor for me to be here with you today and good friend Walter Burnett. Sir, thank you for giving, thank you for caring, and thank you for making a difference in the lives of those young people as well, as well as your constituents. I came into the political arena under the leadership of George Dunn, former president of Cook County Board. We were eating at Eli's Restaurant one day, and he said, "I'd like to know if you would take on the job of being state representative because I think Representative Robert Thompson was moving on to Cosoplas, Michigan." And I said to him, "Mr. President, I enjoy not going to do it, circulating petitions, and speaking on behalf of those endorsed candidates." And so, he said, "Well, think about it, and let me do it next Monday." Every weekend, I would go to Shusboden to ski. And I went down this one hill about 15 times. Each time I was up there, I was unsuccessful. And this particular day, I went down this hill 12 times without falling. So, I went back to President Dunn. I said, "President Dunn, you have your candidate for state representative." He said, "Great." I said, "What is the district?" He says, "Well, it starts at Fullerton, it goes as far south as the Chicago River. And then from Lake Michigan over to the north branch of the Chicago River." I said, "What is the makeup of the district?" He says, "83% white, 12% black, 5% others." I said, "It's like two strikes against me, the curveball coming up." He says, "That's all right. You do five." I said, "Tell me some of the communities." It's Lincoln Park, DePaul, River North, Trinityville, Goko, Sarah, Big Duff's about, Cabrini-Green, Red's Triangle, this, went on and on. So, as it turned out, I put my head into the rig, or into the rigger, and became successful serving the people of that district for 16 years. And then I was asked to run for the Office of Cook County Recorder Deeds. I ran a hell of an office for six years. And then I was asked by my appreciate captains to consider ready for Secretary of State. So, as it turned out, thanks to the people of the great state of Illinois, and you ladies and gentlemen, I became the Secretary of State for this great state of ours, the largest Secretary of State office in the United States. 4,000 employees, $396 budget, 138 facilities, corporate files, securities, keeping the seal, court of claims, and this goes on and on. People of the state of Illinois have benefited from my leadership. I'm going to ride off into the sunset after 23 years. And of course, we want to make sure we put someone in place who will not only take on the job, but will take on the responsibility that goes with it. I also played professional baseball in the Cubs organization. I played eight years, double A, triple A. Hard beat away from the major leagues, but Walter alluded to the fact that there was some discrimination involved, but I don't want to deal with it right now. But after I had finished college, and after every basketball game, Dr. King would beat me, and he would counsel me and would take pictures to hold out yards. And so, that went on for about four years. As was indicated, I played a lot of basketball, baseball, and I taught gymnastics at college. And I also graduated from Lincoln Park High School, which is now, which was Waller High School then, it's Lincoln Park now. And I was successful in scoring over 50 points in one game against Tulley High School. So, I wanted to go off to college. So, Lawrence said, "We watch you," but I didn't have a sequence in math. Ripon, guys, "We watch you, but no sequence in math." Same thing with Northwestern University. Tennessee State said I was too short, it's only five and a half. But as it turned out, Alabama State, Buckville, Alabama took me. And as it turned out, we played Tennessee State a few days, a few games later. And Coach McClendon said, "Jesse White, have you ever thought about..." I scored 18 points. So, he said, "Jesse White, have you ever thought about Tennessee State?" I said, "Yes, Coach." He says, "I said, "Why didn't you come?" I said, "You said I was too short." I said, "No, I didn't say that. I have just lettered by a duffle bag. I'll be glad to show it to you." But as it turned out, after I graduated from college, went out to Ricky Fielder Trail for the Cubs. And there were about 300 ballplayers. They only took five of us, and I was one of the five. And so, from there, I was expected to go out to spring training. Four days before going to spring training, I was drafted to the Army. Sent to Fort Nittawood, Missouri. And while I was there, I had to go back to Alabama State in order to get my diploma. So, I asked my commanding officer, "Could I do that?" He said, "Yes, we'll take care of you, Jess." So, they sent me out on the train to Buckville, Alabama. On the way back, I was scheduled to fly in an aircraft that had never floated before. Driving race storm over Irving, Alabama. Going out to Nashville, Tennessee. I had a parachute on, ready to jump. But as it turned out, the pilot said, "We're going to go west to Memphis and round Memphis to White Air Force Base in Dayton, Ohio, then back, then you can get your other flight to Wright Scott Air Force Base in Illinois." I indicated that I wanted to jump out of this aircraft because I'm not going to ride it down. And the crew chief said, "I'm going to ride, I'm going to stay here." And he ran it down. So, as it turned out, when I got back to my base, I saw a gentleman with a wonderful uniform on. And I said to him, "Sir, what do you know you with?" He says, "The 101st Air Force Corps." He says, "You jump on airplanes, right?" He said, "Yes." I said, "How can a person like me become a part of your unit?" He said, "Simple. You have to join jumps..." Excuse me, "Have to go to Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And of course, you have to go through jumps." Well, I did 35 jumps while I was there and I became a paratrooper. And we got a few people here who I think have jumped out a few airplanes too. But the bottom line is this, I later became the Secretary of State, state representative for 16 years, six as a Cook County Recorder Deeds and 23 in this office. And I want to thank you for your giving and caring spirit. And 62 years with the Jesse White tumbling team. 16,000 young people have come through the program. Only five to my knowledge have gotten themselves into trouble with the law. It's called tough love. We've traveled all over the world, Zagorak, Oshawa, Belize, Israel, China, Tokyo, Japan, Hong Kong, Honolulu, Hawaii, Odaikawa. The list goes on and on. Big Ten schools. Matter of fact, we're going to do the Big Ten Championship Games down in Indianapolis next month. So, we've been all over the world with these young people. Not only give them opportunity to go to all the straight, keep them out of Cubs way, let them know that there's this big wide world out there. If they want to be a part of it, they have to obey the rules and regulations set forth by this organization. So, the bottom line is this, I've lived a longer productive life. I will continue to work with the Jesse White tumbling team as low as there's breadth within me. And of course, good friend Walter Burnett, sir, you've been a gentleman in every way. You've been a supporter, and I'm proud of you. And to you ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much because I say, I have a philosophy like this that says that when you come to this world, you become successful, you come back. But every day, you must do something good for someone. In life, we always want you to look up and aim high. Every time we want you to look down, you should tie your shoes. And remember, do something good for someone every day. That's how I run my life. Thank you.
Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, was resolution number one. We have one more, and that is in recognition of Black History Month. We'll have some folks joining us in the box. We have in the box with us today Joseph Williams, the founder of Dr. Dad's Fathers Club, Cleopatra Draper of VON and Roses for Rosalyn, Artavious Dorsey, Associate Director of Strategic Engagement, University of Chicago Crime and Education Labs, Pauline Silvan, Youth Hub Director, the Phalanx Family Services, Perry Irmer, President and CEO of DeSable Museum of African-American History, and David Peterson of the Pullman Porter Museum. This is a history, this is a resolution in celebration of Black History Month. We will not read through the entire resolution, but are there members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Urban.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, black history is a part of American history. While we talk about having the shortest and coldest month of the year to recognize the achievements, the brightness and the light of the work that blacks have made throughout this country and throughout this world shine beyond that. Here being the birthplace of Black History or Negro History Week, as it was called back in the 30s, and for it to evolve through a presidential declaration in 1976 as part of our country's bicentennial to be what we know to... as part of our country's bicentennial, to be what we know today as Black History Month. We want to thank all these people that have joined us and the organizations that they represent and the excellence that they have continued to bring forth for our community. As we talked about in our, in our Black History Program a couple of weeks ago, and we talk about how Chicago has been at the forefront of history in this, in this country. We talk about our mayor and Harold Washington. We talked about all of the African American achievements that have come in many facets from Carol Mosley Brown being our first elected U.S. Senator after Reconstruction, even to the President of the United States and Barack Obama. So we have been laying the groundwork, doing the, doing the work for this country, for our communities. And again, I think it's befitting that this body take pause to acknowledge the work of all the great African American men and women that have made this country and this city so great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Irving. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. As we celebrating Black History Month, it's a time that I like to remember. I like to remember it every day. I like for the education and awareness to come out because of the struggle of black folks in this country. And I think we sometime forget, long before many of us knew what hard times, black folks have been struggling. And it's one thing to celebrate it, but it's another one when you have went through it. We always talk about what we think we know, but until you go through, you don't know nothing. As they say, walk a mile in my shoes, but for me, as a black lady, and I always tell you, coming from the south, my experience, I always look back over my life. And I thank God every day. What we just talked about with Jesse White, our secretary, that's who we all should be. Yes, we have some things that we have to do. We have to learn to put aside our hatred. We have to learn to put aside racism. We have to learn to love. Many say we are Christians, but we don't show it. Many say we love, but we don't even show it to our children. We supposed to be able to love your neighbors as yourself. Do unto others as you would have them to do unto you. The sacrifice that's been made have been from not having anything, but you appreciate what you have. And I don't know if you can understand that because you didn't go through it. So let me just lay it out a little bit more for you. Because I realize that why we are having the problems we are having today is because the sacrifice that our parents and our grandparents made and laid for us, history won't translate what has happened. Do we carry on now so our children can understand? Freedom is not free. It's not free. And if you believe it, you see it every day. Do I have the right as a black woman to go where I want to go and be treated the same? Every last one of us in this room, no. Being black, you're going to get treated different, I don't care what, because the color of your skin. So when you realize these things, you have to become internal with yourself. How am I going to move forward? Do you hate? Do you kill? Do you steal? Do you rob? Dr. King, you have to turn your cheek and do good. Look past people's faults, see their needs. A lot of folks need some help. Nobody have shared with them. It took time for what they had to learn to make their clothes, learn how to feed themselves. We are not teaching just everyday things that we need to know to survive, and it don't have nothing to do with some things. Just knowing how to be able to take care of yourself. So let me just say, for black people, it's a new day and a new time. We used to love, you say this word, say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud. I wore the Afro and I wore it big and proud. Never was to hold my head down because I know I can always look up. Looking down can't get me anywhere. But there's some hope, there's someone who going to carry me when I can't carry myself. No matter what trouble I get into, what mistakes I make, if my heart is right, I'll be all right. I will be all right. And that's what we know, if we celebrate black history, we can do these things together. Don't let anyone divide you or tell you that you don't have to be black and be proud. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Emma, for sermon number one. God bless you. I just wanted to rise to support this resolution, to remind everyone here that the struggle is real. The struggle is real and the struggle continues today. And if we are going to get ahead, not only in this city, but in this country, we have to learn one thing. Crabs in a barrel does not work. Crabs in the barrel does not work. If we're going to move forward, we have to move forward together and put our differences aside for the greater good. And so when you look at the struggles in our community, and we have struggles in our community, what are we doing about it as a race of people? Are we continuing to fight? Or do we have crabs in the barrel? Or we can take another alternative? What our parents and our grandparents did for us, they banded together to make a difference in our community. They disagreed, but they banded together for the greater good of our community. They fought for the cause to better our communities. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to take a page out of that book and understand that we're not going to get ahead by fighting each other and pulling each other down. Let's lift each other up and hold hands and pull the next person up and pull that person over us and then have that person reach back and grab somebody else and pull that person up. And before you know it, we are out the barrel. Everyone is out the barrel with no man or woman left behind. That's what working together means, and that's what our ancestors have charged us to do. And are we doing it or are we failing our ancestors? Let's look in the mirror, ladies and gentlemen, and realize, banning together, we can make a difference, not only in this city, but in this state and in this country. And so we have organizations here that are, organizations that are on the forefront of making sure that black history is still at the forefront and that we don't forget it. I want to personally thank David and his mother, Lynn Hughes, who have kept the A. Philip Randolph Museum at the forefront of what we are doing here in this city. So we understand the struggle that A. Philip Randolph moved forward with, forming the first union to get ahead. He didn't leave anybody behind, ladies and gentlemen. He did it to form a brotherhood so we can move ahead. So let's emulate that so we can all move ahead. Thank you so much for what you're doing over there, David. And we're going to continue to support you and making sure that that museum is also continuing to be part of the national monument that we have on the South Side of Chicago. And if you haven't been there, you need to come and see the National Monument, ladies and gentlemen, and learn about the history of how the labor movement started here in this country, right here in the Ninth Ward. So there's a lot of history we need to continue to tell, but we cannot move forward if we don't know our history. So thank you so much, Madam President, for bringing this resolution. Thank you all for doing everything that you do. And ladies and gentlemen, let's pull each other up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The Chair recognizes Alderman woman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for bringing forward this resolution. I think that during black history, it's important that we acknowledge what I like to call bench strength, somebody that can pick up the ball and keep moving our community forward, keep making black history in this country. And I just want to thank you for acknowledging the work of all of these people. I just want to acknowledge some of the people on this list who I know. David Peterson, I did not know you were Lynn Hughes's son. So I know your mom very well, and I admire the work that she started and the work that you continue to do. I also want to acknowledge Joseph Williams from Mr. Dad's Fathers Club and all the work that you do with that club and also at Beasley Elementary School in the Third Ward. Perry Irmer, thank you for keeping our legacy and our history at the DeSable Museum. I am so glad to see that you're doing more with the museum and we're hearing more about it. So continue the good work. I'm glad that we're acknowledging you today. And to Cleopatra Draper, you are the next generation of women leadership. I admire your energy. I admire your commitment to our community. And I just, for the, I don't know the other people, so I look forward to getting to know you. I just met you today, Mr. Dorsey. So we will continue to develop a relationship. To all of you, thank you for your commitment to our community and la luta continua. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the black box of excellence, thank you for all the work that you do in our community. It is such much needed and it's good to see a box with young people in it. Dr. Irmer, I'm a special shout out to you. Dr. Irmer is the Executive Director of DeSable Museum, which is the oldest African American museum in the city and probably in the country. And they just did this wonderful release on Wednesday, and we're going to have a discussion with young people in the community. Too often, I think we forget that everything that you love about this country comes from black people. And we don't say it often enough, and we are black three sixty-five. This month is for y'all who don't know what we've done in this country. And I want you all to always remember, we built this country for free. And to my coworkers who are not of African American descent, I want you all to remember, either we going to hang together or we going to hang together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lispata.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I feel particularly as a white alderman in this city, it feels very important to stand in support of this resolution because it feels like a bulwark against the moment that we are living in. Because we, as America, are living in a moment where at least thirty-seven different states are considering or have passed resolutions and laws making the teaching of critical race theory illegal. They, they are so guarded against the feelings of white Americans, the notion that history should make them feel uncomfortable, anxious, that they would make the teaching of our history illegal. The idea that our legal systems, our economic systems, our political systems are so infused with racism, this would make them so uncomfortable, they would make that teaching illegal. And so I am so grateful for a resolution that stands against the moment and the movement in this country, that we are willing to step into those uncomfortable spaces together. Because if, if we're not, that would be a very sad thing for this city and be very dishonest for this city. So for those who are with us today, please continue to teach us in ways that make us uncomfortable, particularly for those of us who are white, make us uncomfortable, please, because it is necessary for us to move towards justice as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lispata. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this resolution and thank you. You know, when we think about black history, black history was first written by white people and then it was rewritten again by white people. And we have been here on this earth for thousands of years, and every contribution we have made has either been stolen or minimized. And now, in this time, in this moment, we see it trying to happen again. Nobody wants to tell our story, but these people over here, they are telling our story. And they're telling it in a way that's never been told before. They're going under rocks, they're going behind things and finding all of the stuff. And Perry, I want to congratulate you for all of the work that you've done at DeSable and the corners and the crevices that you went in, that you have found exhibits, you have found people that nobody had ever heard of. And you have brought them to light, you have lifted them up, and you have helped to tell our story. And, you know, I never thought that in twenty twenty-two that we would, that we would still be having this conversation, yet we are, and it's, and it's in a way that was worse before than when it was being had in the sixties. So this is my second go round on having these discussions. You know, I, I came up when it was say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud, and now I don't know whether I'm going to be able to vote from one day to the next. That is a very sad testament as to where we are today. We look at DeSable Museum and we see how it struggles. We don't see the same thing with the Adler Planetarium, the Museum of Science and Industry, and all the other museums that are on a campus. And yet, DeSable stands alone in a park. We need to do better, we have to do better, and we are demanding that we do better. Now, some of us have memberships to Museum of Science and Industry, Shad Aquarium. How many of us in here have a membership at DeSable? Wow, three, four. So when my colleagues ask, what can we do? And you want to stand, we support these institutions that are continuing to tell the story of black history in America. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddan.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in, in association with this resolution. I can't follow Alderman Metz and Alderman Hairston, I think, with the passion, but I appreciate and want to underscore everything that they've said. And I appreciate my colleague Alderman Lispata's comments as well. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the work that you do, for the representation that you give, both to folks doing the work, right, historical research, storytelling, and also to the youth representation, right? I think that the generational gaps that we have sometimes in our history and our storytelling, or even to Alderman Hairston's point, it feels like we've lost generations of work, but I know that's not true. And so much of what you do, the importance of it, is reminding us that when we feel, when we're in these spaces, when we feel that we've, we've lost ground, when we feel like we're moving backwards, the history and the stories of those that came before us and the work that they've put into civil rights, into equal rights for black Americans and for people everywhere, to be honest, it's a reminder that we're not moving backwards and that it's our job and our responsibility to continue to move forward. What may look backwards to us could really just be like a little bit of a loop, right? We don't know where we're headed completely, but we know the goal. And that goal is forever moving towards justice, towards equality, towards equity, and towards freedom. So thank you for your work and for being here today.
Thank you, Alderman Haddan. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, members of the City Council, to our distinguished guests. Good morning. I too rise in support of this resolution. As someone who proudly and humbly represents the great African American community of West Anglerwood, I've always tried to ensure that we I've always tried to ensure that we lift up the voices of the Black community, represent the sentiment of those that I was elected to represent. I feel as though today, we should be renamed Black Heritage Month, not History, because History only looks one direction, backwards. The ladies and gentlemen here, you're the future. You are forward. You are the experience that will be for the community for another generation. And thanks to Mr. Williams, two generations. His wife's expecting next month, so we have to give him a round of applause. But Mr. Williams, actually, and I know each other from our community, West Anglerwood and the Ward. But I've gotten to know him better, and I am very proud of what he does, answering the call that we've heard so many times of where are the men in the Black community? Being an example of what a male role model can be in our community. That is the future. That is what we must aspire and push people to be. And he's not alone, clearly, with everyone being examples of the leaders of the next generation. Black History cannot just be about the past. It has to be about our shared future in this city, in this country, and most importantly, in our lifetime. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. After hearing Alderman Lispata speak, and when he talked about the difficult conversations, I'm reminded back in college when I was in RA for almost three years, and on my two different floors over that three-year period, there was 120 guys that I was responsible for. And at Western, it was a diverse community. And on my floors, there was a diverse community. And I remember this guy named Sean Baloo from Peaking, Illinois, white Republican. And I had a great relationship with all my men on my floor. And he came with me, he said, "David, if we're talking about trying to be together and talking about ending racism, we should be working together. So, why is there a Black Student Association when we have a Student Government Association? So, why y'all separate? And why is there Miss Black America when we have a Miss America?" Some people would have thought that was an ignorant question, but I did not. And I had the opportunity to sit down and explain to Sean to teach him something he didn't know. And for that, he was able to get it. You're right, Lispata, if you're not having those difficult conversations, you cannot move forward. And I always encourage people to do that, because that's how we can move forward. But what I'm excited about, Madam President, is these young people that you have up here. Because that's what it's about. And it's making sure you all have a voice, a seat at the table, and that you all are empowered. I remember when I first got in City Council, but I was always that way. And I bring young people where they're sitting committee meetings with me, things. Somebody once asked me, "Aren't you afraid one of them gonna run against you?" I said, "I would want them to. I would want them to." And then I had Jamal Green here once when he was in a battle with the mayor, and somebody came up to me and said, "You gotta remove him." I said, "He's not going anywhere. Whether we agree or disagree, you have a right to be at the table and to be heard." And so, you all continue to forge ahead, move forward, and make a difference, because you all are gonna be able to change this world, as Dr. King did as a young man, as Malcolm X did as a young man, and any other young leaders who the ones that did it. So, continue to forge ahead, and no history, but move toward the future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
I'm Chair. I also rise proudly in association with this resolution. I want to thank you so much for the work that you all do. One month isn't enough, and the shortest month is an insult. We should be talking Black History every day of the year, every year. When we think about the contributions across the globe, across the country, but really in our city, and we think about the founding of our city, of our city's greatest leaders and everything they contribute, there's so much to learn. And so, I want to thank you for the work that you do, because Black History happens every day. We often think about what has happened in the past, but every day, people are making history, and that needs to be recognized and uplifted. I also ask that we focus a lot on Black Histories that pertains to law. When we think about the council and the things that've come before us, when we're asked to look at legislation that's supposed to bring forth justice, we need to look at the history of things that have been presented that bring in forth justice and how they actually bring the opposite, how they've subjugated and harmed Black people across our history when we think about these things. So, thank you for everything you do. Please continue to do it, and please continue to challenge us so that we can continue to move ourselves forward in the way of justice and not allowed to be clouded by those who would brand things as such. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. I too join the body in supporting of this resolution. I want to thank the members of the Black Caucus for bringing this forward. Just a short historical note, make sure that everyone understands. In 1915, the legendary historian and author Carter G. Woodson convened a group of African-American leaders at the Wabash YMCA here in Chicago to form the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. A little over a decade later, in February 1926, that same Association would go on to launch Negro History Week to celebrate and deepen the history of African-American history. I think that in this time, what we need to be focused on is, of course, the past to make sure that our young people understand that we have a rich, vibrant history, stretching not just across this country, but back to the continent of Africa. But I also think we need to make sure that we do more to celebrate the present and the future. We are in a period of Black excellence everywhere in this city. Growing up as a kid, I thought of Chicago as the Mecca for Black people in this country. And we've got to make sure that we highlight and magnify the efforts of Black people everywhere. I want to join my colleagues in thanking the distinguished guests that are with us. I hear in the box, I want to exercise a point of personal privilege to thank Perry Ermer, my law school classmate and dear friend, for the work that you are doing to make sure that DeSable Museum continues to grow and live and be vibrant, and pushing us to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to help support your mission. I also want to thank you for your leadership as President of the museums in the park and making sure that there is a continued fight for equity for museums, not only DeSable, but the Mexican-American and Puerto Rican museum, that you get your fair share of the resources in the city. But thank you all, one and all, every day, for what you do. You are representative of a legion of people across this city who understand that the work happens at the block level, soul by soul, house by house. Thank you, keep up the fight, and congratulations, everyone, and enjoy Black History. I do not see Alderman Mitchell, so I'm gonna ask, is there a motion for passage of these two resolutions in the omnibus? So, a motion by Alderwoman Austin, hearing no objection, so ordered. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business? Thank you, Alderman Austin, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Communications from her honor, the mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council, the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the transfer of unused tax-exempt bond volume cap to the Chicago Housing Authority. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority regarding the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance increasing the cap for the software contract with Unicork Inc. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a fine 925 amendment for favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with Class 7C Renewal Tax Incentive for a property located at 10749 Southwestern Avenue. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Sections 2-44-050 and 2-45-040 of the Code Regarding Delinquent Property Tax Certificates and Land Banking Agreements. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the transfer of project and associated property from Community Housing Partners, IILP, to RAHFV-5T, Inglewood LLC. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at 508-510 South Cicero Avenue. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Section 2-8-040 of the Municipal Code for favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee of Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Human Relations, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to enhance the city's laws prescribing sexual harassment. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Department of Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the City Treasurer, I transmit in ordinance amending Section 2-32-515 of the Code Regarding the City's Investment Policy. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Joint Committee of the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration, these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments of the Advisory Council on Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Your favorable consideration, this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to respective subjects designated as follows. Executive Order Number 2022-1 regarding a statement for the Food Equity Council, Tax Increment Financing, Redevelopment Plan and Project for Cicero Stevenson Redevelopment Area, City Treasurer's Report Regarding Overall Income and Total Holdings Across All Funds by Treasurer's Office for Year 2022, and Associated Statement Investment Policy and Guidelines. City Treasurer's Statement of an Updated Investment Policy and Guidelines Office of Inspector General's Advisory Count Concerning the City of Chicago Data Quality. Office Inspector General's Audit Report Concerning City's Compliance with Tax Increment Financing, Financing Sunshine Ordinance and Tax Increment Financing Surplus. Executive Order and Resignation of Patrick E. Thompson as Alderman of 11th Ward. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting hailed on January 26, 2022, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or one-on-one newspapers was published in a pamphlet form on February 23, 2022 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, and Claims Against City of Chicago, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Correction, December 15, 2021, City Council Journal Proceedings, which are referred by the Committee on Committees of Rules, and Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval Permit Application for Demolition of Non-Contributing Building at 843 North Walcott Avenue, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. That is the end of their communications report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, committee reports, starting with the Committee on Finance. Chairman, wake us back.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on February 17, 2022. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement and land use agreement with New Covent LLC, Covent Apartments LLC, and Covent NHPF Manager LLC to provide multifamily program funds, tax-exempt bonds, and loan assistance for the acquisition, deconversion, and renovation of the Covent Hotel located at 2653 North Clark Street in the 43rd Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and unless anyone wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll-call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lispata. Lispata is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talaffaro. Talaffaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagas Pack. Wagas Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Arston. Arston is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kappelman. Kappelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes. Burnett is a yes, and Brookins is a yes. Cardona is a yes. Is Haddon?
The yeas are 47, the nays are zero. Alderman Kappelman under motion for reconsideration.
President, I make a motion to reconsider.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman, wake us back.
Chairman, wake us back. Madam President, item number two is a communication recommending a proposed substitute ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement and multifamily program funding loans with Chicago Lighthouse Residences 9 LLC and Chicago Lighthouse Residences Manager LLC for acquisition and construction of mixed-use and affordable housing located at 1134 South Wood Street in the 37th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication recommending a proposed substitute ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement. Excuse me. And multifamily program funding loans with Chicago Lighthouse Residences 9 LLC and Chicago Lighthouse Residences Manager LLC for acquisition and construction of mixed-use and affordable housing located at 1134 South Wood Street in the 27th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to provide tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $17 million, other financial assistance, and conveyance of city-owned property to Roosevelt Square Affordable One LLC to rehab and construct affordable housing units at various locations and develop the National Public Housing Museum at 919 to 925 South Ada Street in the 25th and 28th Wards. This item received favorable approval by the committee, and I believe Alderman Irvin, no? If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Do you want to speak on that?
Thanks, Madam President. This is Alderman Haddon. Just wanted to be recorded as an eye on the roll. The first favorable roll call.
Thanks.
So reflective. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with 63rd Maryland LLC and 63rd Maryland Manager LLC for multifamily program loan funding, tax increment financing funds in the amount of $5 million, and the purchase of city-owned property to develop affordable housing located at 839 to 845 East 63rd Street and 6305 to 6311 South Maryland Avenue in the 28th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Mrs. Wagus Pack, that's the 20th Ward. You said the 28th.
Can you repeat that, Alderman? I'm not sure he heard you.
Can you read the address again? Because I think you're talking about the 20th, but you said the 28th, and it's printed wrong. CC 3 of Maryland.
Yes.
That should be...
The 20th.
20th Ward?
Yep, it should be.
All right. Madam President, I can make a correction on that. It should refer not to the 28th Ward, but to the 20th Ward.
All right.
Alderman Taylor.
Correction?
My apologies, Alderman.
All right. Hearing no further comment or objection, so ordered.
All right. Item number six, Madam President. Item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to authorize the issuance of tax exempt revenue bonds for the construction of the Auburn Gresham Apartments located at 834 to 858 West 79th Street and 757 West 79th Street in the 17th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing or TIF funds in the amount of $135,000 for eligible costs of certain improvements at Biggerdike Square Park located at 1461 West Ohio Street in the 1st Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $350,000 for eligible costs of certain renovations and the construction of a comfort station at Metcalf Park located at 4134 South State Street in the 3rd Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $800,000 for certain improvements and renovations at Burnside Park located at 9400 South Greenwood Avenue in the 8th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $3.5 million for eligible costs toward the construction of a recreation center and playing field at Adams Midill Park located at 1434 South Loomis Street in the 28th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $650,000 for eligible improvement costs at Fernwood Park located at 10436 South Wallace Street in the 34th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 12 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $500,000 for eligible costs of certain renovations and improvements at Wilson, Frank J. Wilson Park located at 4630 North Milwaukee Avenue in the 45th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 13 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $500,000 for eligible costs of certain construction and renovations at Jefferson Memorial Park located at 4822 North Long Avenue in the 45th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 14 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District concerning the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $3.46 million for allocation of developer contributions for certain renovations of the Field House at Clarendon Park located at 4532 to 4534 North Clarendon Avenue and 4538 North Clarendon Park in the 46th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 15 is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Items 16 and 17 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denial of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Objection, so ordered.
Item 18 consists of four proposed orders authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter to and execute settlement orders in the following four cases. Item A, Chetrel McCombe versus City of Chicago. B, Mia Wright versus City of Chicago. C, Coretto versus City of Chicago. And D, Chad Johnson versus City of Chicago, starting out with item 18A. This received favorable approval by the committee. Chetrel McCombe individually and his next friend and guardian of Dylan Harris, deceased, versus City of Chicago et al. and Antoine Watkins in the amount of $1.4 million. Unless someone wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 18B, in the case of Mia Wright et al. versus City of Chicago, cited as 2020 CB 07688 in the amount of $1.675 million. This item was approved by the committee by a roll call vote, and I move passage of this matter by a roll call vote.
Before the roll call vote, I believe there are members who wish to speak. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Tabarez, Cardona, and Spisato join me in moving to defer and publish this item.
The item will be deferred and published.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon. Did you wish to speak to the matter that's been deferred and published?
It's been deferred and published.
You'll have another opportunity. Back to Chairman Wegas back.
Madam President.
Yes.
Item 18C, this is Coretto et al. versus City of Chicago et al., cited as 21 CB 735 in the amount of $1.2 million. Item 18C, Coretto versus City of Chicago, received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 18D, Chad Johnson versus City of Chicago in the amount of $150,000, received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes the Committee on Finance report.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas. Back. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a subcommittee meeting on February 9, 2022, and a committee meeting on February 16, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following items. A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance for the year 2022 within Fund Number 925 for various city departments. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And now, item number two, an ordinance introduced by Alderman Brendan Riley, 42nd Ward, approving the transfer of funds within the City Council Legislative Reference Bureau for the year 2022. I move passage of this item by the same motion. If there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And the Subcommittee on the Chicago Republic Recovery Plan also met this month for a subject matter hearing. During this hearing, the Subcommittee discussed affordable housing and arts and culture. No votes were taken at the subject matter hearing. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Committees and Rules. Chairman Harris.
Madam President, and the members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules, which met on Tuesday, February 22, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following item, R2021-1487, a resolution amending the rules of order and procedures of the City Council to allow electronic voting.
Objection.
I was going to ask if we would suspend the rules to allow the clerk to speak.
Hearing no objection, the rules will be suspended to provide the clerk with the privilege of the floor. Madam Clerk.
I just want to thank everyone here in the City Council chambers for the last four years of working with our office. City Council modernization is here. Thank you, Mayor, for helping us with the budget dollars. Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman Michelle Harris, for putting this in the Rules Committee, and to all of our co-sponsors. We will be electronic voting very soon here. So, thank you for all of your hard work to get us here.
And thank you, Madam Clerk, for your hard work.
Madam President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President.
Do you have one other item? All right. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology. Chairman Vegas.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Tuesday, February 15, 2022, the committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 through 10 are various special service area reappointments collectively voted for the following special service areas. Reappointments of Helen C. Cameron, Jill M. Metz, and Jenny Yang to SSA Number 26, Broadway Commercial District Commissions located in the 48th and 49th Wards. Reappointment of Payem Berriani and Mara Nemus to SSA Number 43, Devon Avenue Commission located in the 50th Ward. Reappointment of Maria Sarapas to SSA Number 16, Greek Town Hostage Commission located in the 25th, 27th, and 42nd Wards. Reappointment of Mark H. Davis, Etta B. Cosione, Kevin J. Greco, and Kenneth Dotson to SSA Number 35, Lincoln Avenue Commission located in the 43rd Ward. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 11 is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 4747 South Kedzie Avenue and 4801 South Kedzie Avenue in the 14th Ward, which was introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the January 26, 2022 City Council meeting. I move for pass of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Vegas. Next up, the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Chairman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a remote meeting on February 14, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following items, R2022-72, Affirmation of the City's Support for Independence, Sovereignty, and Territorial Integrity of the Ukraine. I move passage of the item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? If not, I will. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, as we hear in the news every single day, the territorial integrity and the democracy of the country of Ukraine is under siege by outrageous aggression by Russia. It's important for this body to send a message in support of President Biden's efforts, and really, a league of nations united across the European continent, that we stand with them, and importantly, that we recognize and stand with the country of Ukraine, many of whose residents, whether by birth or by ancestry, reside here in the City of Chicago. I thank the committee for stewarding this matter, and I ask for your favorable vote. I think we have a motion. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you for supporting the residents of Ukraine in their effort to remain a free and democratic country.
Thank you, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyer. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a remote meeting on February 15, 2022. The committee has a series of reports recommending The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item one is the sale of city-owned property at thirty-five sixty-four South Giles to Kendall Frambo in the Third Ward. I move passage, cited by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Item two is the sale of city-owned property at four-two-four East Forty-Sixth Place to Jason Julian and Allison Miller Julian in the Third Ward. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is the sale of, as is, city-owned property at thirty-six twenty West Lexington to Robert Seaberry and Tamika Seaberry in the Twenty-fourth Ward. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is the acquisition of improved parcels at thirty-eight eleven West Madison Street, thirty-eight thirty-one West Madison Street, thirty-eight forty-one West Madison Street, formerly an Aldi in the Twenty-eighth Ward. I believe Chairman Irvin may want to make a comment on this.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I don't think as government we take lightly the acquisition of property. I did hear the concerns that were raised in the hearing and want you all to know that this is something of utmost urgency and necessity. The community of West Garfield Park currently lacks any, and I say any, full-service grocery options in its community with the loss of Save-A-Lot recently. This is the right type of step that's needed in the Madison Corridor to bring back the vitality of the business district that once was considered the Michigan Avenue of the west side of Chicago. So I do urge and appreciate the support of the members, and again, we do not take this lightly for the acquisition of privately-held property. Thank you.
And if I may, Chairman Osterman, we've been obviously working closely with Alderman Irvin. The way in which Aldi's abandoned the community gave no notice to the employees is something that we also can't take lightly as a city. We are continuing to look at our various options, but meanwhile, there's an urgent need for a grocery store to come back to West Garfield Park, and we are working urgently with the Aldermen to make that happen, which is the reason why this item is so important. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you. I just want to ask my members on the City Council to support this. Many of you cannot imagine not having a grocery store in your ward. As a matter of fact, when I was at one of my colleague's children's school, they couldn't believe that there were things such as food deserts, when they are able to see thirteen grocery stores on their way to wherever they're going. There is one grocery store for every one hundred and fifty thousand people in the suburbs in Chicago. That is not it. As someone that took six years to get a grocery store when Dominics left, Dominics that had every of their locations in the City of Chicago were taken by Jewel or someone else, except for the one in the black community, which was on the south side in the City of Chicago. And while we are in this black history moment, let's talk to corporate America. Do you and your family have the need to eat every day? How many grocery stores do you pass when you're taking your child to soccer, to volleyball? How many? When it's your turn to prepare snacks for the kids at the game, how many choices do you have? And yet you get to have healthy snacks. Your kids aren't drinking the blue juice. They're not eating the flaming hots for breakfast, lunch, dinner, or snacks. So when we talk about what we're doing and how we want this to be a better country, we have to put our money where our mouth is, and it starts with the fact that everybody has a right to eat and needs to have the opportunity to have somewhere to shop. This is corporate discrimination on some of our basic human functions, and we sit in here and pretend. And each time, one of my colleagues has to stand up and talk about, oh, another grocery store left. Oh, Alderman Moore has had it happen. It has not happened in any of the other neighborhoods, other than in the black and brown neighborhoods, and it is not just here. It is in Maryland, it is in Washington. This is a corporate discrimination, and I am asking my colleagues not only to support this, but let's raise our voices and make this happen throughout the United States. It is ridiculous in 2022 that we're still arguing about where to get food in the richest country. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'm not going to repeat what Alderman Harrison just said, because she said it so strongly and eloquently, but I also, I'm a person who like to try to make sure that we're moving the needle. And part of the things I want to make sure that we do, and using this Fifth Floor and Mayor, I stick with you because you're a person committed to developing the south and west sides of Chicago. But we have to look at things as a whole. So when you hear me vote, like, on the gaming issue with whether it's the Bears or the Blackhawks, what I look for these people to do, because part of the problem is operators. You have some developers that want to build a grocery store. All they want is they rent, but we don't have operators. But then there's people who do not have money to partner. So it's important that these stores and these businesses help us develop operators. It's important that millionaires that run for office, the best way you can get elected is to help a community. Use those millions to go and put into communities to help so we can develop operators, and there's an opportunity for that. When we're talking about begging, because I remember when Alderman Harrison, seven years, that hurt my heart, to have to beg someone to open up a grocery store, and then what we're dealing with in the Auburn Gresham and Inglewood area, is that when you hear about Pete's and Tony's have cut they deal, that Pete's won't go north and Tony's won't go south, and all Pete's do, what they do is they make a real estate decision. Yeah, it's a business, and they'll make a real estate decision. So you have a shuttered store in the Eighteenth Ward for years, but because a school like Luther South opens up, then you buy that property and then you build one, but then people have been hungry for years. So we have an opportunity here. This is a solution, not just a complaint, a solution. All of these businesses, all of these sports people who's making money, when you're saying you're giving out clothes and you're giving out toys, the best thing you can give is people an opportunity and invest in these communities. And I want to make sure, Madam President, that we're using that Fifth Floor to do that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to lend my voice to this message. I support my colleagues' efforts, but I need to move on my Pete's Grocery Store, Madam President, and I just have to say that publicly. Thank you.
I'll refrain.
I'll make a...
I believe that Alderman Lopez would like to speak.
Yeah, the other David Moore. Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. You know, when this matter came up, I don't think any of us disagree that the west side in the Twenty-eighth Ward absolutely deserves to have a grocery store. At that time, we didn't even know the Save-A-Lot situation, which unfolded a few days later, stripping that community of both grocery stores, as my colleague alluded to. But I have a problem with this ordinance, the same problem that I had when it was in committee, which is that we have an unequal, unequitable application of an unknown policy, God bless you, being activated for this purchase. To my colleague's point, it is horrible when a store closes that is a staple in your community, when you have nowhere else to go. I've seen it in my own ward numerous times, and not just grocery stores, to be clear. When CVS up and left Inglewood, it not only had a food desert, but now you had a pharmaceutical desert on top of it. Deserts in black and brown communities is something two-thirds of this council knows damn well. But when you have a policy like this, purchasing a lot without having a end user, that is a dangerous gambit we are playing with taxpayers' money. Because, as any of you know, trying particularly to get a grocery store has become exponentially more difficult in the City of Chicago and indeed the country, in part because of their rebate scandal and other issues that have gone on for the past ten years, long before this meeting came today. Those industry issues are unresolved. Those industry issues make it ten times harder to find a grocer, particularly a small grocer, to come into a community. If we buy this today, there will not be a grocery store tomorrow. There might not be a grocery store for three years. The Fifth Ward can attest, it took six years to fill a vacant Dominics. Are we going to be responsible for this site for the next six years while we wait to find a tenant? Look at any of our wards with vacant lots to see what the job we do in maintaining the properties that we have now. Now we're going to have a hundred thousand square foot property to maintain and a building to boot. If we had an end tenant in place, I'd be the first one to jump up and down and champion this for my copy. If we knew that there was someone coming in, even in the next six months, I'd be all for it. But if we start buying up vacant parcels in our wards now, we are going to see an explosion of city-owned property, city-owned storefronts, city-owned buildings across every ward in the City of Chicago, because that's the only thing that's right and fair when all of these businesses leave, based on the policy logic we're hearing today. And for that, Madam President, because the administration did not articulate as asked what our policy was moving forward, I cannot support this today. Thank you.
Chairman Osterman, I feel compelled to correct a few things that the...
Madam President, if I could speak to the issue and hopefully move this item forward, I made a commitment to the members of the Housing and Real Estate Committee, and I make this to the full council, to try to get planning to come up with a more clear policy moving forward, which I think is fair, given to a lot of comments made about vacant parcels around the City of Chicago. But I think it's important for us to move this issue forward today, and I would say that in Alderman Irvin community on the west side, losing a grocery store is unbelievably significant, not just to his community, but to surrounding communities. And that's something that many of us who have a lot of grocery stores don't get. Having the City of Chicago use this authority, not to hold a property forever, but to try to actively work to bring in a grocery store, is something we need to deal with right now. Looking at how planning and other departments use acquisition authority moving forward, that's something that we can work on, and I pledge, as the Chairman of the Housing and Real Estate Committee, to get planning to be more engaged with you in your communities, as well as housing. We're trying to offload vacant lots to make them productive for communities, but right now, we're dealing with one $700,000 acquisition authority that planning is requesting for a grocery store on the west side. I think collectively, now in this moment, we should come together and support this. We can look at broader issues moving forward, but the people on the west side need a grocery store, and planning has heard, the mayor under her leadership is looking to make significant investments in the south and west side. I think we should act on this. Just wanted to share that comment, Madam President.
Well, I think you covered it, but the notion that we are willy-nilly exercising this unusual authority is just not so. This is a dire circumstance. We are concerned, working with Alderman Irvin, about the condition of that property, making sure that it is maintained in a way that will be attractive for a new grocery store to come in, while we continue to actively pursue leads. We have several, and we believe that we're going to get this done. I would urge the members of the body to support this matter.
So notwithstanding a no vote by Alderman Lopez, I would make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing a...
Alderman Beal also be recognized as a no vote.
So with the no votes of Beal and Lopez, hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number five is the acquisition of vacant lots at sixteen-hundred dash seventeen-twenty-nine South Peoria Street, sixteen-hundred dash sixteen-twenty-four South Newberry, eight-thirty-four dash eight-nine-two West Eighteenth Street, eight-two-seven dash nine-twenty-five West Sixteenth Street, as an element of a multi-litigation settlement with PMG Pilson Investment LLC for the developments of affordable housing in the Twenty-Fifth Ward, a six-acre site that I believe is going to be used collaboratively to invest in Pilson and add affordable housing. And Madam Chairman, I'd like to recognize, or I think Alderman Sitko Lopez would like to be recognized on this matter.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sitko Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman, Madam Mayor. I want to thank first administration, Commissioner Navarro, Chairman Osterman, and especially the community of Pilson, who has been settling this case for decades. This opportunity to acquire over six acres of land in a community that has suffered and endured mismanagement, corruption, and lack of investment in affordable housing will bring hope, but more than anything else, it will bring the opportunity to create the largest affordable housing development in the city. I would like to thank Mayor Lightfoot and Commissioner Navarro specifically for your collaboration and being receptive of this important settlement. Our community needs, more than ever, investment, needs stability, and with such a shortage of affordable housing, not only in Pilson but across the city, the fact that we will have the opportunity to create at least two-hundred-and-eighty units of affordable housing with the community, creating the guidelines in a process that will be public, in collaboration with the Housing Department, with the Department of Planning or Office and the Mayor's Office, is the type of collaboration that we need in the City of Chicago to overcome the many challenges that we have, especially around affordable housing. It is extremely difficult to create affordable housing under these conditions, and I welcome this opportunity to create this very needed opportunity together. The fact that these are going to be family-sized units in a time where it has been nearly impossible to create affordable housing through the market, the market, dear colleagues, is not going to help us address the shortage of affordable housing. This has to be and must be an endeavor that is taken by the City of Chicago. Investing in affordable housing, creating stability in our homes, it is also critical to address the issues of violence and the issues that we have in the City of Chicago. I want to thank you again, the administration, for working with us on this unprecedented and historic opportunity that has been years in the making, and I hope our colleagues give us a favorable support on this item, and thank you again for this opportunity on behalf of the Twenty-Fifth Ward residents.
Thank you, Alderman Sitko Lopez. Chairman Harris...
I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Last item on the agenda is item six, the reconvenance to the City of seventeen lots from Revere Community Housing Development LLC and Transfer to Habitat for Humanity Chicago for Affordable Housing Development Area of East Seventy-second Street on South Woodlawn Avenue, South University, South Dobson, and South Greenwood and East Sixty-Ninth Street in the Fifth Ward. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, on reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on February tenth and February eighteenth, 2022, and the following items were passed by the Committee. Item number zero-two zero-two-two dash three-nine-three was an ordinance to amend Section four dash six-zero dash zero-one-zero and four dash six-zero... and 4-60-073 of the municipal code, adding two lakefront venue liquor licenses for location on Chicago Park District property within Millennium Park. I moved that the City Council incurred a recommendation of the licensing committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance Report with the exception of Alderman Irving and Alderman Scott voting no, and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, and with those no votes noted, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 202021-364, an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the municipal code regarding eligibility to do business with city of Chicago due to removal from public office, treason, seductions, or related offenses, Alderman Viejas and others. This item will refer to the Committee on Contracts and Oversight and Equity. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. There were seven ordinance regarding moratoriums in the various wards, the Eighth Ward, the 19th Ward, the 27th, 31st, 35th, 29th, and the 42nd Ward. I move the passes of these item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February 17th, 2022. Before the committee, there were 342 items. There were 340 routine items that passed and two routine items that did not pass. There was an ordinance introduced by 42nd Ward, Alderman Brendan Riley, amendment of the municipal code of Chicago, Section 9-64-206, by installing parking meters and establishing operating hours of parking on portions of West Ohio Street, both sides of West Ohio Street, from North Kingsbury Street to Dakota Sack, to the east, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, that pass. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objection, those items will be considered in the omnibus. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Pharoah.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which meetings were held on February 9th, 2022, and February 17th, 2022. There were several items on the agenda for which the committee recommended do pass. On February 9th, the committee recommend that the passage of A2021-172, the appointment of Andrea Kirsten as chief administrator of Civilian Office of Police Accountability. Madam President, if there's no comments that anyone wished to make or no objections, I believe Alderman Spazato is motioning, Your Honor, for a roll call vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a lot to say, and I'm not going to say it. I'll keep it brief. For 11 years, I've supported your and a previous mayor's appointments, but this is just not an appointment I could support. I don't think I have to go over everything with everybody. And if some of you are uncomfortable with voting yes or voting no, you might want to walk out of the room right now, but I will be asking for a roll call vote. And I am certainly cursing and reminding my colleagues of the letter that 20 of us sent to you with two other Aldermen that wanted to sign on to the letter that never had the chance. So with that, and if nobody else wishes to speak, I would like a roll call vote on this appointment.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll. The chair recognizes Alderman Irving.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry. Wait. My apologies. I don't- What happened? All right. Well, okay. We've had a great discussion on this particular matter. I do believe that we, as a body, must stand for what is right. We cannot allow the emotions of a certain individual situation necessarily cloud our judgment on the overall work and the body of work of the Copa and its chief administrator. All this woman did was her job. That's all she did. She did a job. Her job is to report the facts. The facts are the facts. We cannot have our own set of facts. They are what they are. Now granted, we understand what happened to Officer French. Again, as a son of a Chicago police officer, that is, they called it, no one wants to get. And some of us have lived with that a lot of our lives. And the sacrifices she made, of course, for our citizens and for our city is to be honored and to be cherished. However, we do understand that we have to have a system that we are honestly looking at the facts of what happened. And to not approve her appointment because of that issue, I think, would speak volumes of our character, and I think it would speak volumes as to how we would want people to perceive the actions and the work of Copa. Again, we've had a lot of challenges in this city as relates to police accountability, and I don't think now is the time to walk backwards on not approving an appointment based on someone doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark. Mr. Chairman.
Comments. You know, one thing that I said in committee, we are supposed to be a law-abiding society. We are supposed to follow the laws. And what we have before us is a chief administrator that did exactly what my colleague Alderman Irving said. She followed the ordinance. We created the ordinance. When Alderman Harriston long started talking about police reform, we all came together and voted on her ordinances and voted to pass. And what we added was certain things to that ordinance. One was the Copa office, the other being the Deputy Inspector General of Public Safety. Within that, we revised that ordinance, and we didn't give our chief administrator any leeway, left or right, to make her own decisions as to what she felt was best under the circumstances of Officer French's death. So I say that we have to either ask for a chief administrator that's going to follow the ordinance to the T or one that does not. And under these circumstances, she followed the ordinance, as my colleague just said. And what we have to do, if we see some areas in the ordinance, we either have to amend it or repeal it. And what we did, and it's before this committee, if we recognize the problems and we've recognized the situation that the interim chief administrator was under, and we've amended it, and we will have that up for vote next month. But we have to ask our chief administrator to follow the ordinance to the letter, not to veer from the right or not to veer to the left, but to follow the ordinance to the letter, because that's what we demand of her. And so I would recommend that my colleagues vote yes in favor of this appointment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Tavars.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in opposition to the appointment of Ms. Kirsten as chief investigator of Copa. Ms. Kirsten has refused to admit that she made a mistake in releasing the report seeking a suspension for a fallen police officer. Now Ms. Kirsten seeks a position to judge police officers who make split-second life-or-death decisions. Ms. Kirsten has refused to apologize for her decision to include Officer French's name in the report, instead saying she's sorry if Officer French's friends and family took it the wrong way. Ms. Kirsten said her hands were tied in releasing the report recommending Officer French for suspension due to FOIA regulations. Though this has been called into question by leading experts in the field. And we've learned that Ms. Kirsten has taken zero use-of-force training to see how she herself would respond under similar situations that police officers face on a daily basis. So here we are, 200 days exactly from the day Officer French died, and the council is now considering somebody who refuses any accountability for the hurt she's caused the French family. These facts make me concerned that Copa is more focused on dishing out punishment instead of truth and fairness. And amid a CPD staffing crisis where 12-hour shifts, 12-hour days, and canceled RDOs are on for certain this summer. And what sort of message does Ms. Kirsten's appointment send to our Chicago Police Department? We can do better. I'll be voting no, and I'm interested to see how many who vote in favor of this appointment ask for more police officers in their wards in four months. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon again, members of the City Council, and welcome Andrea Kirsten and family. I'm glad that today we want to talk about following the law. It's a remarkable change for this body. Because seven months ago, this body approved a change to the law that said a civilian commission has the power to appoint, hire, and fire the head of the Copa. That is the power this body gave to civilian oversight and accountability to police department. Seven months later, we all have amnesia. Seven months later, we're saying we have to appoint the acting administrator. We have to do it because it's the law, because she was following the law. And if that is your argument, then follow the law of the ordinance that this body approved seven months ago to leave that responsibility into the hands of the people who are going to be a part of the civilian commission for public safety. All other arguments aside, I understand and I can relate to. But at the bare minimum, if we're going to talk about following the law as the argument for moving forward, then let's look at the law that's already on the books for how to pick this appointment, who has the power to do it, and who we all agreed to do it moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I rise in support of this appointment. Andrea, to your family, thank you for being here. To your daughter, whose name I forget, I know I met you briefly, I'm so sorry. I just want to let you know, your mom has been an exemplary public servant through this entire time. She's been subject to, I think, a lot of unfair expectations. You're going to hear probably further debate on this matter. To my colleagues who oppose this appointment, I genuinely can understand your position. I can understand the strong feelings that you have. I wish that those feelings extended to the lives of black residents in the city, as some of those same colleagues who've been so vocal are the same people who DMP'd a settlement. If you want law and order, if you want consistency, if you want accountability, we need it from all of us, all of our public servants. That means police officers who bash out windows, pulled somebody from their hair, and blind them for no reason have to be held accountable as well. And that's why Ms. Kirsten's appointment and having someone in place right now, months ago actually, someone who's going to do her job as written to code, no matter the unpopularity of it. You guys have been dragging her. She's been put in a position by the ordinance to do something that maybe didn't feel good, to put her at odds with other public servants in the city, subject to a ton of pressure. And under all of this public pressure, Ms. Kirsten has followed the rules. She has done her job, and that's the kind of person that we need in charge of an accountability office. So I stand in strong support. And anyone who opposes this today and also holds the double standard of expecting to let other people off the hook when they are wrong, when they are wrong, when they violate the public trust, shame on you. And I don't say that lightly, because I respect you guys, and I don't like to shame people. But shame on you for the double standard, for letting that emotion that you have blind you to what is right, to what is fair. And on a day that we sat giving accolades to Secretary of State Jesse White for his fairness, for his integrity, we need to live up to that. Support this appointment. Let Ms. Kirsten continue to do her job for the city and for the people of Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Haddam. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. So often, when we talk about police accountability in this space, we're asked what we remember and what we've forgotten. So like, on the amnesia point, I remember being here seven months ago where we voted on the Empowering Communities for Public Safety ordinance. It's a great ordinance. We're going to have an interim commission soon. We're going to have district councils and a permanent commission after that. And that commission, and when it's online, could search for a year and not come forward with a more capable and trusted leader than Ms. Andrea Kirsten. I'm so delighted that through all of this, you have just been the picture of composure and patience with our body, with this process. I'm very grateful for the leadership that you're going to be bringing to this organization. If there's a message that your appointment brings, it's that this is an organization that is truthful and fair and consistent. And I am grateful that we are establishing that kind of reputation for Copa. So thank you for sticking with it. Thank you for being with us today, and very glad to be able to vote for your nomination. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was one of the Aldermen who signed on the letter because I questioned the timing. And what I respect about her and the reason why she will get my vote today, because I called her and she picked up the phone and she answered, and what would I have her to do? And what I said to her was, you need to depend on the 50 people that sit in this seat to assist you when you have to make decisions like that, because it had to be told, because that's the law. But what bothers me more than anything, when we talk about accountability, what was this accountability for Laquan? What was this accountability for Adam Toledo? What was this accountability for Angelina Young? See, we pick and choose who and what we're going to hold accountable. We need to hold everybody accountable. That goes from the Madam that sits- That goes from the madam that sits at the top of that chair to the bottom person. And so I really want you all to think about. I did feel like it was insensitive when it came out because she had just died. But I did understand that it's our responsibility and our duty. I sometimes forget, I sometimes think we forget who we work for. We are paid to represent the people in our community. And we can't pick and choose who we represent. We're paid to represent all of them. And so the thought that we want to hurt her back for her doing what she was supposed to do. Do I agree she did it in a sensitive time? Yes, I do. But I do respect, and you will get my vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Madam President, I am too one of those individuals to sign the letter, highly concerned about the tone and about the lack of, you know, connection, given the fact that Ella French really paid the ultimate price serving us, the public. Since then, I've had a long conversation with Kirsten, the COPA chief, about the fairness and accountability. We walked through a bunch of scenarios where, you know, there's a lot of complaints that never see the light of day. And I want her to talk through me on those to see exactly, you know, how she handles. I did my research on what other people thought about her and her temperament. The fact that also the president, mayor, also criticized at that moment in terms of how the handling came about also made me think about what the decision should be. And someone that understands what we're feeling through, understands the moment and the fairness for everyone involved, not just police officers, but also those folks that are on the other end sometimes with, you know, being harmed by actions of police. We need somebody, at the end of the day, that's going to be that fair person. And you can only get that by getting down deep into it, talking to that person, asking others, the body of work from her throughout these years, the professionalism. What is she all about? And only then you can come to the conclusion whether you support somebody like that or not. Of course, I was upset because I really believe French Ella paid the ultimate price needlessly based on what had occurred. So for that reason, I'll be voting yes on her appointment. Understanding what's expected from that position. Leadership, fairness, accountability, especially to both ends, police and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Madam President, and thank you, Alderman Taylor, for the reminder when we all have amnesia some days. I also signed on to the letter because I understood exactly how people felt in the moment, and I felt that way. But in talking to Kirsten, Andrea Kirsten, and understanding really what's at stake, that even when it's difficult, you make the right calls because that's what the accountability that Chicago needs. I will also be in support. As someone who worked on ECPS with a lot of the coalition and our colleagues here, yes, we agree that part of what's written is that the commission would decide who's appointed, but we have to get that commission built. And so I do appreciate that it's moving forward. We need it to be moving forward more expeditiously, but I'm glad that there are those steps. But seeing the calls that we have to do and looking at the history of not having accountability here in the city as it pertains to the police department, it is even more crucial that in times when the calls are difficult, that people are making the right ones. And so you should be very proud of the integrity necessary to do so, even in those times. I understand how we all felt, but as someone who signed on to the original letter, I am also be voting in support of this appointment. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, I too was one of the individuals that signed on to this letter in the beginning because I did find it to be insensitive what happened. But after speaking with you and talking with you and listening to what you had to say, I do believe that you were doing your job. I support the Chicago Police Department. The men and women in the 4th District are some of the finest people I've ever met in my life. And the best, they're hardworking and they really go above and beyond in what they do. And I think you will do the same. I appreciated your words about, you know, we can talk about how we can do things differently and look at the sensitivity of issues so that we don't ever make this mistake again. And as human beings, we all make mistakes. We all do things that we, oh God, we look at and we look back and we think, I wish I wouldn't have done it that way. So I will be supporting this appointment today. And I appreciate your honesty and your openness and your willingness to listen as well. So I always want to say to your daughter, you have an amazing mom that holds herself accountable and is willing to speak and work with others. So you are very lucky. You're a very lucky young lady. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you. I stand in support of this appointment. Ella French was a hero to our city. And I think if there was a way that her name was not in that report, I think that's what all of us wanted. I understand the response of Andrea Kirsten to that. And I think that we as legislators have the ability to change ordinances and statutes so that we don't ever have a tragedy or have that again. But Ms. Kirsten has shown professionalism in an unbelievably difficult job, right? Let's think about the work and the responsibility that she has in this moment in Chicago. She has to be fair. She has to be right every single time to build trust with the police and communities. And she has shown professionalism, responsibility in that role. Unbelievably difficult role in a city that's going through all that we are going through. I want to thank you for wanting that job. Because let's be honest, how many people want to step in that role? She's doing this at a time when we need her most, at a time to bridge, build bridges. It's taken a while because we're so far divided on some of these issues. She has to be right, and we have to support the work of COPA. Many of you that are around when COPA was changed, and we think of the time when that occurred, and think of how we are in our neighborhoods. We need COPA to be professional. We need strong, independent leadership. She has shown that, and I support her, and we should support her. And I think we've got a lot of work to do on all fronts to make our city safe and bring us together. But COPA has a critical role in that, that we acknowledge. And I respect her wanting to do this and the work she has in front of her, which is very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
I'm just having a great day. We should have Black History Month every month. I too rise in support of this appointment. And what I want to say to my colleagues, by the way, I did not sign the letter. But what I want to say to my colleagues that are new is get out of your feelings, okay? She had a job to do. She had to deal with the facts that were, that were there. We always talk about, I hear a lot of this transparency, this transparency, that. But only when it suits our needs do we want them to be transparent. Do we want them to be timely with their reports? Only when it suits our needs. She did not do that. She did her job. We still see today that we want to rewrite the rules when it's convenient for us. What we're talking about, the situation, was Angelina Young. Nobody wanted to say that. And so while she was being exposed to the world, we want to talk about what we choose to remember. It's not amnesia. It is choice. And it's not what you do, but it's how you do it. And I think you've done it honorably. You've done it professionally, and I will be supporting your appointment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Chairman Tyler Farrell, I believe the floor comes back to you.
Madam President, I would like to just take this last opportunity to correct the record. Ms. Kirsten appeared before the Committee on Public Safety. And I can't count the times that she's expressed not just the situation and how she felt about the situation she was placed in, but she apologized several times while in committee. And she's apologized several times to the family of our fallen hero outside of committee as well. And so I do wish that the record would reflect that rather than what was noted earlier by stating that she did not apologize. So I would like the record to reflect that, Madam President. And I believe Alderman Spazato called the roll call vote on this matter.
Please call the vote.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins votes no. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell votes aye. Alderman King. Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston votes aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal. Alderman Sodloski Garza. Alderman Sodloski Garza votes aye. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas votes aye. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn votes no. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke votes no. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez votes no. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea votes no. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor votes aye. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman DeBoris. Alderman DeBoris votes no. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Sechel Lopez votes aye. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin votes aye. Alderman Telfiero. Alderman Telfiero votes aye. Alderman Ravoyes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona votes no. Alderman Wagisback. Alderman Wagisback votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes aye. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas votes no. Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits votes aye. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Spazato votes no. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent votes no. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano votes no. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley votes no. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony votes aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner votes no. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Kappelman votes aye. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Hadden. Alderman Hadden votes aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein votes no.
The yays are 30, the nays are 14. The motion passes. Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman. The yays are 31, the nays are 14. Andrea, I will share in public what I've said to you privately. Having done a version of this job before the beginning of time, when it was called OPS, a precursor to IPR and now COPA, I know firsthand how difficult the job is. Every time you make a decision, someone's going to be unhappy. But what I admire about you and why I know you're the right person for this job in this moment is that you're going to call balls and strikes. You're going to do your job with integrity and dignity, and you're going to be fair. And you've heard a lot of comments from members of the body, which I know you will take to heart. It's difficult, striking the balance between being transparent, being supportive of the families, but being fair, as you must be, to the officers as well. Not an easy job. I know that firsthand. But congratulations and welcome to the Cabinet. All right, Alderman, wait, before you leave, I skipped a step. Alderman Kappelman on the motion for reconsideration.
I make a motion to reconsider.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Now you're officially a member of the Cabinet. Congratulations.
Of several members to the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board, A2022-12, the appointment of Carla Orlandini as a member, A202213, the appointment of Ernest Cato III as a board member, A2022-14, the appointment of Susie Park as Chair Member, A2022-15, the appointment of Mary Sheridan as a member, and A2022-16, the reappointment of Dan Casey as a member. Madam President, if there is no objection, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
On February 17th, the Committee recommended the passage of Substitute Ordinance 2021-4130, the Amendment of Municipal Code Title 8 by creating a new chapter, 8-6 titled Victims' Justice Ordinance, to create civil remedy or to create a civil remedy against street game predatory and profit-driven practices. Madam President, I join my colleague Alderman Napolitano in moving to defer and publish this item.
We deferred and published.
And lastly, Madam President, on February 17th, the Committee recommends the passage of Substitute Ordinance 2021-3993, the Amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-78-120 by defining sexual misconduct and modifying powers, duties of the Chief Administrator of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chairman Spazaro.
Madam President, members of the City Council reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on February 16th and reconvened the meeting on February 22nd. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. A2022-1, an appointment of Andrea Tully as Commissioner of the Chicago Park District. We don't have Andrea here today? Is Andrea in the back? Wow, okay, well, little disappointed Andrea's not here. Andrea's a longtime friend of mine. Even though I'm not her Alderman, I like to think I'm her favorite Alderman. So we have her favorite Alderman and her second favorite. She said, so her favorite Alderman, her second favorite Alderman would like to say kind words about her, but I guess if she's not here. So with that, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything about Andrea. I know most everybody knows her from the Library Board. Okay, nobody? All right, okay. Well, with that, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
022, I'm sorry, O2022-395, an authorization for annual programs and events contracted by Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, known as DK for year 2022. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
a substitute ordinance amendment of Municipal Code Section 10-8-335 regarding permitting process for outdoor special events. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Vice Chairman Rodriguez.
Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting was held on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The following ordinance passed by the majority of the members present. Pages two through four include nineteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from wards one through five, eight, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-four, thirty-nine, and forty-seven. Please note that ordinance oh two zero two two dash two zero zero was held at the request of the local Alderman located in the fourth ward. On page five, it includes one ordinance for a transportation item introduced by the local Alderman from the forty-second ward, and on page six, which includes one ordinance for a subdivision introduced by the local Alderman located in the thirty-second ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rodriguez. Next up, the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Madam President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on February twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages one through nine contain various map amendments in the first, third, sixth, eleventh, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth, thirty-seventh, thirty-eighth, forty-fourth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page nine contains the historical landmark designation of the Seth Warner House located at six thirty-one North Central Avenue in the thirty-seventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call, by the same motion, if there's no objection.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Page ten contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade, in the first, eighth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, thirty-fifth, forty-first, forty-second, forty-third, forty-fourth, and forty-seventh wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objection.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tony. Ladies and gentlemen, next up, the agreed calendar. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Good, thank you, Madam President. I've received from Clerk Anna Valencia a total of sixty-one items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following Alderman: Alderman Harris, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Burke, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Tony, Alderman Kappelman. I move these and move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, new business. Please call the wards beginning with the fiftieth.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, granted privilege out on over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code sections nine dash forty dash zero seventy and nine dash forty dash zero seventy-one to establish fines for violators who drive on sidewalks or pedways and on sidewalks in housing authority developments, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Two regarding City Council Committee Oversight Powers and to further regulate Office of Legislative Council, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley also has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for a signed signboard at forty-two South State Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Napolitano has proposed ordinance for opening of the public streets within the area bounded by North Overhill Avenue, West Clarence Avenue, and North Canfield Road, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed resolution for expression of support for Howard Brown Health's non-nursing workers' efforts to unionize, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Wagasback has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter seventeen dash ten dash zero one zero two A, regarding additional off-street parking or loading spaces within official Chicago landmark districts, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telefiero has proposed resolution to call for the month of April two thousand twenty-two to be known as Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month in Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Burnett has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Karen Lewis CTU Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Secho Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call on the Biden Administration to revoke Title Forty-two policy and reinstate non-emergency border policies to allow immigrants and asylum seekers right to apply for entry into the United States, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Moore has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of South Ashland Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on policy formation inclusive of natural immunity in current and future mitigation policies and protocols, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Big Tom Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Quinn also has a proposed ordinance for renewal of designation of the forty-sixth precinct of the thirteenth ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Cardenas has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Thirty-Sixth Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Sawyer has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Seventy-Fourth Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection, and a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of South State Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Sawyer also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles two, three, four, eight, and nine by modifying various sections and adding new sections regarding living wage and safety regulations for transportation network providers, which is referred to drivers, excuse me, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman King has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for a signed signboard at three hundred South State Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Dowell has a proposed order to approval of a plat of forty-four Commons resubdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Dowell and others have proposed resolution for expression of support for the Biden Administration nominating a black woman to serve on the United States Supreme Court, which is referred to Committee on Budget and Government Operations.
And I ask to suspend the rules to make a few brief comments. I want to thank the mayor.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and all of my colleagues who signed on to this resolution to support the Biden Administration nominating a black woman to serve on the Supreme Court. In the two hundred and thirty-three years of the history of the Supreme Court, all but seven justices have been white men, and we must ensure that diverse voices are on the court and that black women bring a unique and important perspective. There are some very highly qualified black female candidates from the public and the private sector, and I just want to make sure that our council is encouraging the president to support the nomination of a black woman in this instance. Our rules require that this resolution go before a committee, and I'm pleased that it's going to the Budget Committee, but we will also send a copy of the resolution in advance of our conversations to our president and to the Senate Judiciary Committee. Madam President, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Dowell. Do you have a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Yes, make a motion that we return to the regular order of business. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
Alderman Hopkins has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West North Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. And Alderman Laspada has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Chicago Avenue. And Alderman Telefiero has a proposed ordinance for vacation of alleys in the area bounded by West Wabansy Avenue, North Nordic Avenue, West North Avenue, and North Neva Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes all the medic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal or move that it be approved.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
That's miscellaneous business? All right, the date and time.
I'm not aware of miscellaneous business, the date and time next meeting. I've ended up the ordinance to the clerk setting the dating time for the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Beordane by the City Council of the City of Chicago, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, March twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two, beginning at ten o'clock a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, there is a determination in accordance with section seven E of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted in the city clerk's website along with an amended meeting agenda indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by ten a.m. on Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell, just to clarify, I skipped ahead and miscellaneous business. Are you aware of any miscellaneous business?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Before we proceed with the omnibus, the chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm asking to have immediate suspension of the rules for the acknowledgement of a celebratory resolution for George Blakemore on his eightieth birthday.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, no, it's too hot for me to put on George. I want to just say thank you to someone that pushes us all the time. Sometimes we may not like what he says, but me personally, I appreciate that he says it and has the right to say it here in City Council. He's unapologetically pro-black. He does things that sometimes may be a little off-putting in his words, but what I appreciate about George Blakemore is his deeds. You know, if it wasn't for George Blakemore, he would not have a stop named after Harold Washington by the library. If it wasn't for George, this, I think, is great importance, we wouldn't have public comment here in City Council. George was a significant influence in making sure that happened, but he just always, I think, makes us better. George makes us never forget that we are, especially in the Black Caucus members, that we're black and we need to make sure that we advocate for the interest of black people. And I respect that in George, and I appreciate his works. Again, and I'll say this, I appreciate it so much, I even bought one of his jackets at his birthday celebration Saturday, which I attended, and really appreciate it. It was a great time. I'm going to hang this up in my, George, I see you up there. I'm going to hang this up in my office, and I'm going to want you to sign it, so it might be worth something one day. George. Many, many more. Happy eightieth birthday to you, my brother. Thank you.
The chair, and the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and for my colleagues, I too have one of the George Blakemore originals. I actually ran upstairs to go get it. It took me three days to air it out in my office because of the fumes. Painted with love. But I've known Mr. Blakemore well over a decade, and he has been nothing but consistent with his preaching for goods, jobs, contracts, and services. And I would recommend to all of you, if painted leather is not your thing, Mr. Blakemore also does artwork for sale. Which he has available. But I just want to wish him a happy birthday, thank him for the memories, and I look forward to the day where, one day, all fifty of us can sport a George Blakemore original in this body. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also stand proudly in support of the resolution. I know we've all had our moments with Mr. Blakemore. I can say I'm one of the few that got to ride shotgun with him like the Blues Brothers style for a couple times. And so in having conversations with him, there are definitely things we may not agree with, but we've always been able to have open conversations. And I think he is an example of really what it means to be a concerned citizen and being a part of the democratic process. And I hope there are a lot more neighbors that follow suit to make their voices heard. So happy eightieth birthday, and hopefully you get a lot more. Thank you so much.
Alderman Vasquez, the chair recognizes Alderman Coleman. Also sporting.
I too rise in support. It took three people to help me get into my George Blakemore. Pretty in pink with the blank piece, but Mr. Blakemore, you are so necessary. Your voice is so necessary, not just here in the city, but in the county and in the state. God bless eighty years of your life. Keep talking, keep pushing. We're certainly listening. While I'm not as tactful as Mr. Blakemore is, certainly I'm appreciative of your voice and of your fashion. God bless you, Mr. Blakemore. Happy eightieth birthday, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I also like the rise in support of George Blakemore's birthday, eighty great years. You know, I've been knowing George for a long time. When I was a teenager, I used to work at a Burger King on State and Chicago Avenue. And George Blakemore used to sell hats, gloves, scarves, earrings, anything you can think of right outside. As a matter of fact, he encouraged me later on. I had became a peddler myself and got my peddler's license. But you know, I also, just like the rest of these guys, I bought one of the jackets from George. You know, George is real hard on the Latino hermanos, imanos, and imanas, right? But he's also hard on me. I don't know if you know, Mayor, but George always attacked me here in the City Council, and I don't even do anything to him, and he still, he always attacking me, you know? But, but we, and you know, I bought one of his jackets from him two years ago. I thought because I bought a jacket from him, it was going to chill him out. He started attacking me more. So I just want you all to know, just because you bought those jackets, it don't mean he ain't going to talk about y'all. Happy birthday, George.
Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Hey, guys. I'm up.
Hey, guys.
You guys mind?
Hey, Sue.
Excuse me, excuse me, you guys mind? Sorry, guys. I can't hear when people are talking, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your help, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President, for my opportunity to wish my friend George, Mr. George Blakemore. Mr. Blakemore and me formed a relationship over the years, believe it or not. I believe I'm his favorite northwest side Alderman, so thank you for that, George. Believe it or not, George came to my community one day. We had a park district community meeting as far, about as far west as you can go in the city, and George was there speaking, took the bus, took the train, everything. So I saw George walking down the street, kind of after the meeting, looking a little disheveled and lost, so I took him and I gave him a ride to the train, even though he was a little worried I was going to put him in a trunk, he kept saying. That's true, you know, Andre Vasquez, Alderman Vasquez may have rolled with him, but I gave him a ride to the train. But he was all concerned I was going to put him in a trunk and never to be found again. But George, I love you, I appreciate you, like Alderman. Like Alderman Sawyer said, you're unapologetic for what you say and I really appreciate that and you, you're a man who believes in what you believe in. Don't always agree with you, but I do agree with you that you speak your mind and you come to our meetings and you keep us on our toes. So happy birthday and God bless you, buddy. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to rise in support of the resolution wishing George Blakemore happy birthday. And what I'm reminded of is when you have a voice like that, when it's no longer there, I promise you, we'll miss it. And so I want to thank you for coming down, not only here, but whether you're at Park, the Park District or Cook County. You are coming down and letting your voice be heard. And I ask people constantly that they should come down and be involved in their government. Otherwise, you're going to continue to get the type of government that we have if you're not involved in it. And so your voice matters. I want to give a big shout out to Excons for Community and Social Change for making sure that you had a very nice birthday celebration, letting everybody know about it. Fortunately, I can be there, but I wanted to just make sure that you were celebrated and continue to use your voice because it does make a difference. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to rise to be associated with this resolution. I thought George was the one that came to the License Committee all the time. So he really helped to educate us about the public sidewalks and just things that made sense that, why we don't have. And before you know it, we're looking at ordinance and ways to implement that plan. But one thing I wanted to say about George was, I remember George always looked like he was, I won't call him a peddler, but he acted like he didn't have no clothes. And he would always come down, I'm like, George, why don't, why you dress like that? I said, you know what? The mayor of Daly, I think it was, said you had a lot of money. Said you just dressing like that, just trying to make people think you ain't got nothing. George, next time I saw him, he had his clothes on, he was dressed up. I'm like, oh, my Lord, George can dress up like that? And he's doing it now, he's been looking, and he is an intelligent man. He say what nobody else will say, not, won't say, they just won't say some of the stuff that George would say, but he get his point across. You can read between his line what he's trying to say. So I appreciate him, I appreciate the age, eightieth birthday, and then to come down here at City Council all the time, just to be recognized as a citizen, a voice, which he's exercising is right. And I can appreciate that about him. During the COVID, George, we were all talking about how we miss you because we didn't have these public appearances and George was missed. So give him Miss Flowers while he's here because one day, if it won't be him, it may be us, but we won't have an opportunity to say happy birthday. Happy birthday, George.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this resolution to honor George and to say happy birthday. George, you say what a lot of us are thinking and you don't mince words and I love that about you. Sometimes you're wrong, but most of the times you're right. And while people think that you're coming from somewhere else, you, you really know where you are going and where you are headed and you're absolutely right. And sometimes people need to check themselves. Your commitment to not just the city of Chicago, but to the county and anybody else that has public meetings, because I understand that you go to them all. And there is no more conscientious citizen than that. We, we miss you when we don't hear your voice. We are critical when we do hear your voice, but we're happy to have you here. And Emma, I too have seen him, he has been cleaner than the Board of Health. And so wishing you happy eightieth birthday, George. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, I will join the Law Office with one thing, though. Just got to turn it on the anti-Mexican thing, that bothers me, here's my feelings, you know what I mean? So wish him the best. Hey, I'm just talking about me now, just talking about me, okay? Lower the temperature on the anti-Mexican, thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will say this. At first, when I would hear the name George Blakemore, I roll my eyes. Here we go. But over time, I have come to appreciate him as he speaks to us. Now, I don't always agree and sometimes I don't like being the brunt of his comments, especially when I know he's wrong. But what I do appreciate is the opportunity to speak to him off-court, so to speak. George is very engaging and will go that extra mile to have a discussion with you about a point of view that you may not agree with him on. And then at some point, you both walk away happy. I want to wish you a very happy birthday, George, happy eightieth birthday. I will say that I would purchase a jacket, but I don't think that you can get that sleeve length right for me. But I also want to acknowledge your phenomenal shoes and happy birthday to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dowell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Madam President, I too rise in support of this resolution. Just want to say happy birthday, George. I know that we don't always see eye to eye and you always, I am in the crossfire of your ire a lot of the times. But, but I do admire your commitment. When I first met George, it had to be about fifteen years ago and he was speaking at the Park District Board Meeting. And then to see that he came to every committee meeting and to every City Council meeting. And then I was over at the County Board with my, my County Board President, I'm not my purported president, my County Board Commissioner, and he was over there speaking there as well. So George is a really, I don't want to say this, involved citizen. And we appreciate your participation. I just want to wish you happy birthday and many, many more. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Last one. Chair recognizes Alderman King. You all must want to stay here all day.
Just want to rise in support of this resolution. George, Mr. Blakemore, as I call you, and just say happy birthday. And like everybody said, your voice is important. You represent people who can't get down here a lot and I just appreciate your voice. So happy birthday and enjoy.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Happy birthday, was it goods, contracts, and services? So we are ever reminded of our responsibility to our communities. But again, to, you are, as we call, public citizen number one. Thank you for what you have done to keep us all on the right course and remind us when we get off course. Happy eightieth birthday. And again, I wear a six X if you feel the need to buy some extra paint and put one of them jackets to work for you. Thank you.
Mr. Blakemore, you have a lot of love in this City Council. We wish you all the best, happy eightieth and many more. Thank you for continuing to prick our consciousness. And as many have said, we may not always agree with everything you say or how you say it, but we're glad you're here. We're glad that you are actively engaged in our participatory democracy. You sometimes say that I cast a spell on you. I think you cast a spell on all of us. We wish you the best, sir. Alderman Sawyer, is there motion to return to the regular order of business?
Madam President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objection. Would you like your resolution passed in the omnibus, sir?
Yes, I would, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Mitchell, I'm coming back to you regarding moving the date and time of the next City Council meeting ordinance in the omnibus.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, I believe that you have one other matter to attend to.
Alman Scott has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Donald W. Bulk Honorary Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way.
All right. Alderman Mitchell, the omnibus.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Have a good rest of the month, everyone, see you in March.